Okay, I'd like to call to order the special board meeting of the Frankfurt Plant Board for Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, at 5 o'clock. We're meeting in person in the committee room of the Frankfurt Plant Board. Madam Secretary, would you call the role?
Member Delong?
He's en route, he'll be here shortly.
Member Keban?
Here.
Member Mason?
Here.
Member Snyder?
John's at, the General Assembly's working late tonight, and he called to say that they were having a special committee meeting and he would not be able to be here.
Member Decimital?
Here.
So we have a quorum, and Jason will be here in a few minutes, so with that, I'll turn it over, I guess, Vent, to you, and we're going to consider approval of a CIPA long-term memorandum agreement, sub-agreement number 11, authorize Brown-Thorton New Gen Strategies and Solutions LLC to sign the agreement on behalf of the Frankfurt Plant Board. As I understand, this is a long-term agreement, the other municipalities have agreed to it, and this is something that, obviously, we have the discretion, but it's an agreement that's been put in place to operate and is needed to continue operation of our CIPA agreement. So Vent, you want to take it?
Yes, Mr. Keban, yeah, you're correct. I have Brown-Thorton here tonight with New Gen Strategies. He's kind of our representative on a lot of these things, so he'll kind of go through it, and I was going to have him give a little bit of a high-level explanation of some of the CIPA things for people on TV that may be watching. But you're right, periodically, these sub-agreements come up, and this is how they do the repairs and the maintenance on the dams. All the parties involved are involved in this, and the monies that are spent, when they're all reconciled, they're put into the rates that we see from CIPA themselves.
And didn't you mention that in current year budget, what we're operating, we're actually bringing in, I don't know if a record's appropriate, but certainly more than budgeted of CIPA revenue, is that correct?
This year, we realized more CIPA revenue on our power supply than we have at any other time.
Okay.
Right. So if you're fine, I'll have Mr. Thornton give his presentation.
Oh, Steve, did you want to? Okay.
Brown, are you on there? Are you ready to give your presentation?
He seemed to be having a technical difficulty, it was working. Hold on just a moment.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I just don't hear anything on your end. Okay, I'll just keep going here. If you need something, Vent, just text me. So I'm just going to give you a few minutes of history on your CIPA power for those board members that are not familiar with CIPA power, and what it is, and how you got it. And then we'll talk about the sub-agreement number 11, that it's recommended to approve Your CIPA stands for the Southeastern Power Administration, and the CIPA power, or the hydro power that you receive, comes from this Cumberland River system. This slide here shows there's four power marketing agencies in the country. You've got the Bonneville Power Administration in the west, and then a fairly significant one in the middle of the country there called Western Area Power Administration, and then Southwestern Power Administration, and a part of Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, et cetera. Now, the Southeastern Power Administration, which you are a customer of, markets to that 11-state region shown there, to the southeast. CIPA as an organization, it markets power generated at federally-owned hydropower projects. These hydropower projects are called multipurpose because they have to kind of manage different goals, like navigation, flood control, hydro power generation, and then recreation. So you have some competing interests for the projects on the Cumberland River. Now, CIPA, unlike some of the other power administrations, they don't own any of those generation units. Those are all owned, operated, maintained by the US Army Corps of Engineers. And they also, CIPA does not own transmission lines, so they contract with TBA to get the power out of the Cumberland River system. And then they have transmission contracts with TBA to do that. This is a kind of a graphic showing the 11-state marketing area, or CIPA. It shows you there's 22 projects across four different river systems. Again, the Cumberland River is the one that you've got power from. It starts in the, you know, in that southeastern part of Kentucky. The first project that you'll see there to the east is actually Laurel. The next one there, toward the Tennessee state line, is Wolf Creek. I'll talk some more about that in just a moment. Then you've got, coming on down the river system, you've got Dale Hollow, then Center Hill, Cordell Hall, Percy Priest, Old Hickory, Cheatham, and then there at the end, on Western Kentucky side, you've got Barclay, at Land Between the Lakes. If you look at the whole, CIPA as a whole, they've got about, a little over, almost 3,400 megawatts of hydropower generation. The CIPA markets themselves, they are public power entities, such as co-ops and municipals or public bodies here. There's one investor on utility that gets allocation, and I think they received the allocation because an ILU took over a municipal system at one time, but they kept their CIPA power. And most of the time, you'll see that the hydro power customers are customer-owned or municipal systems. CIPA as a whole collected about $300 million through rate revenue last year, and they've got a little over $2.5 billion, I mean, a little over $1.5 billion repaid on the $2.9 billion total initial capital investment. Again, those investments that they're repaying are the initial investments on the hydropower projects. Cumberland River system, again, which you are a member of, it's a total of about 950 megawatts. The Kentucky municipals kind of group those in two different fashions there. One is the Kentucky municipals that are members of KYMEA, and then the other ones that are not. But the ones that are members of KYMEA, your allocation is about 57 megawatts as a group. And then if you go down to that 57 megawatts and break it down, you see that Frankfurt has 15.6 megawatts of generation. How's that power used? Typically, hydropower that is behind a reservoir, it's very dispatchable, very flexible, and it's kind of reserved for that, to serve what we call a super peak, or the peak loads in the mornings or afternoons, depending on what time of year it is. So typically, you'll dispatch CIPA power at the times when the load is the highest. Coincidentally, that's also the time in markets when the power is the highest, as far as price goes. But it gives CIPA powers quite a bit of value over other generation types that are not dispatchable, or that are, you know, more like a base load unit that's on it all the time. So again, you've got limited energy you can use with that capacity, and it's best used at peak loads. The CIPA power as a whole, they are charged with repaying the federal investment of projects on the Cumberland River system, in this case, the dams, and the hydropower facilities. And when they talk about an annual repayment study, that's what I would call a rate study. They go in and do a repayment study and see how the rates are recovering the revenues associated with repaying that schedule and paying O and M, and transmission costs and things of that nature. And so it says here that, you know, CIPA pays 100% of the specific power cost, as well as an allocated percent of joint cost. That joint cost allocation, for example, as a river system whole, it runs about 60%. So if you look at 60% of the cost associated with the hydro facility, they say 60% of that is power-related. The rest of it is allocated to things like navigation, flood control, et cetera. So your rates are based on cost, and then CIPA has long-term contracts with each of the preferred customers, which you are one of. This is just saying, you know, the CIPA and Corps of Engineers are kind of a partnership along with the customers in administering the hydro power program. What are some of the challenges? Well, you know, you've got competing uses of water. Power generation, water supply for communities, recreation, and then environmental, so you've got to balance all that, you know, as a normal means of doing business, as well as, you know, respond to wet or dry seasons. The biggest challenge right now, and you guys, that's the root of this sub-agreement, is the aging hydroelectric facilities along the Cumberland River. Because of the aging hydroelectric projects, a hydropower rehabilitation program was developed to basically inject over $1 billion in new investment in the next 20 years, and it's solely for the rehabilitation, refurbishment, or replacement of these hydro facilities that are quite old. I'll speak a little bit about that, and just right here, it talks about, when we were looking at reduced reliability, you had some outages, you know, system failures, you know, some of this major equipment had been in place for, you know, depending on when it was put in, from 45 to 74 years old, and the expected life of this equipment, you know, from accounting perspective, is 35. So, you know, this, these facilities on the hydro projects were quite old, very well-maintained. I have to give kudos to the Corps for, you know, maintaining those pieces of equipment to run as long as they have. But there's a dire need of being replaced or not being available for use. So recognizing that federal appropriations is actually the only source of funding they had in the past, and it's kind of very difficult to fund a repair and replacement of hydro power facilities. So there was an arrangement developed where the customers would do direct funding of capital projects. And this was actually done in one of the other PMAs or power marketing agencies, I think it was Western, and we borrowed that framework to develop a, at first, it was a series of MOAs or memorizations or agreements to pay for the specific capital projects to keep the system going. So fast-forward a little bit into this, we developed a Cumberland River Rehabilitation Master Plan in 2014. It was a comprehensive set of studies that looked at the existing hydropower infrastructure, and the plan that was developed to replace the older equipment, it's pushing a little over, almost a billion and a half dollars over 20 years. And that's the current estimate. In 2014, the initial master plan was developed, and then in 2021, it was reviewed and redrafted, and I think it's now in the review stage, or it may be already finalized by now, but again, the idea of doing the master plan to begin with is to have a good plan for executing this capital program, and then revisit or revise it every four, five, six years, just to reflect, you know, your plan in progress. What I put together here is just kind of a history of the sub-agreements and how those got started. The first MOA, a customer funding arrangement, was in 2004, and the actual MOA was just for a year. Didn't have a sub-agreement per se, but it was one in the same document. And then in 2005 and '06, there was a new MOA developed that had two different sub-agreements, totaling 15 million total. And, you know, it was kind of a heavy lift to renegotiate these MOAs every year, even though it was done again in 2008. That was another two-year agreement with three sub-agreements under it. And the project totals were, for each of the sub-agreements, were eight, seven, and then 10, for a total for the '07, I mean, the '08, '09 MOA was 25 million. And that's, again, that was the time that the customer group kind of was working with CIPA and the Corps, saying, hey, is there any way we can get a long-term arrangement in place? We've got our, you know, plan in place, but is there a better way? So we spent my better part of a year negotiating this long-term MOA, just, it's 20 years. We also negotiated in there that even though we, as customers, did not, this is an important piece of the negotiations, we entered this, like, 20-year agreement, MOA, and we got CIPA to commit to not giving us notice of termination during that time, but we did not relinquish our rights to terminate these contracts if we want to. So we still have that right, to terminate the contracts. It's, you give a three-year notice anytime, and on the years where they adjust the rates, which is every five years, it's a one-year termination. So we preserved our rights to terminate, and CIPA committed not to give us notice for over 20 years. But this gives you the kind of sequence of events. The first MOA, well, I mean, the first long-term MOA sub-agreement was in 2011. At the time, we entered into the MOA, the two sub-agreements were signed simultaneously. Each was 25 million. I mean, I've got that 25 million with the bar going down to the bottom. Each of these sub-agreements, from 1 through 11, was $25 million. And with approximately $50,000, $50 million a year total revenue, you subtract out transmission, you end up needing a sub-agreement about every six to nine months, depending on how much revenue comes in. So these click along at about once a year, but they're not hardly a year between them yet. It's kind of staggered. So I think the last one that was done, it says 2021, was, you know, mid-year 2021. So it hadn't hardly been a year yet, but we're into this now with the sub-agreement number 11, which is the one that was most recently prepared. And I'll talk about it. Here it is. Sub-agreement 11 falls behind the other 10. It has these projects here that are totaling 25 million. You've got some Wolf Creek projects for the rehabilitation there, and you've got some things that, a few things at Cheatham there, and then Laurel and Jay Percy Priest. Each of these projects are part of the master plan I talked about earlier. If anybody would like to, you know, take a look at that, it's got the, every one of these work items is staggered out in a chronological fashion, so to speak, and this, the sub-agreement is just a way to fund those on an ongoing basis. We've reviewed this and recommended, and you guys approve it.
Vent, can, can he hear us, or do we?
Again, I can't hear you at the moment, but any questions, I'd be glad to entertain you.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me?
He can hear you. I have the hundred.
Okay. The question I've got is, exactly who's contracting with who? The US Corps of Engineers and CIPA are federal agencies, and then all the various agencies, KYMEA and all those others, are all entering into a contract with the two, who's contracting with who? Is our contract with Corps of Engineers, with CIPA, with both of them, and then everybody else then enters into that agreement? So it's got, however, I mean, what's, the list here is... 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. There's 12 people contracting with either CIPA or the Corps, is that correct? 12 individuals?
The, before you say contract, are you talking about the long-term MOA?
Yes, I mean, we're approving this agreement number 11.
Correct.
That contract, we sign it, and then we're signing it with who?
Okay, the sub-agreement 11 is part of the long-term MOA that was signed in 2011.
Okay.
And the parties to that agreement are each of the customers, so you've got 20-some-odd customers, 24, I believe it is, CIPA customers, CIPA is a party to the MOA, as well as the Corps of Engineers.
Okay. And who's actually running the dam? That's the Corps, right?
The Corps of Engineers owns and operates the dams.
Okay. Then one other question I just had, real quick, is with all the federal money that Congress approved last year, whatever, for federal infrastructure, I mean, I don't think there's any question improvements, maintenance need to happen, but like the Corps or CIPA, no one's eligible to apply for that big pot of federal money that was at 1.1, 1.2 trillion? That's not eligible for anything to fund any of these projects? Is that right?
That's somewhat right. The problem is, they've never been able to get hardly any appropriations for rehabilitation. They did get some on the, I guess, the financial package redo, but they didn't get a whole lot. But they really don't receive appropriations for rehabilitations. Most of the appropriations they receive are for what they call maintenance repairs and things of that nature.
And I agree that in the past, but I don't think there's ever been 1.2 trillion allocated for federal, state, and local projects before either. I think that's kind of a, somewhat of a, an unusual occurrence also, and I was just wondering if they had actively pursued trying to get that money, and I'm sure a lot of those, the rules aren't even out yet, but if they'd ever tried to get some of that money? Or were planning to?
My understanding is that, yes, they are in the process of, or will, you know, be pushing for that, but to be honest, they've indicated their expectation's pretty low.
Jason, Catherine, Steve?
I guess my question, and it may sound dumb or whatever, fairly simple, is what are we giving in this contract? I mean, what, you know, what's the consideration for, what do we, what do we, what do we offer, what are we giving up in this transaction, in this transaction? If I can explain. Why do we have to sign it? Maybe that's the question.
And what happens? What happens?
I think, if I understand correctly your question, let me explain what the customer funding agreement does. All the customer funding agreement does, it was a vehicle where your normal rate revenues that are really set to recover capital and operations, those normal rate revenues are redirected to the Corps for capital projects. That's really all that's happening here, which is, it's an odd accounting of your revenues, but what happens is your normal revenues from rates are going to capital projects instead of operations. Now, but that's really all that's happening here. The question, I've had this question entertained before, they said, well, what if, what if we don't enter into this arrangement? And I said, well, if you don't enter into it, then your revenues will go to the Treasury instead of to the Corps for capital projects. It won't affect your rate whatsoever. That's kind of maybe hard to understand, but it won't affect the rates that you pay, as long as, the rates are depending on the actual capital that is invested and the operations cost. So if a participant, if someone didn't participate in this process, all it does really is slow the capital spend down a little bit, so it takes longer to get these projects rehabbed and back online. To the question.
I'm not sure I understand that one. If, okay, if you go to page 7, okay, of your PowerPoint, and it's showing revenues of 313 million, okay? Then what you're saying is, there's 313 million of revenue generated from the sale of the power. If you take 25 off there, which is the amount of capital, then there's less revenue that we would get in the coming year from the CIPA contracts. If we don't approve those capital improvements, then we get more revenue, and you said money, more money would go to the Treasury. So does more money go to the people that are in it, or money go to the Treasury?
Well, here's, here's what normally happens without this arrangement in place. But remember, the projects, the projects were initially funded with federal funds, you know, back in the '40s, '50s, '60s, up till the early '70s, I think was the last project that was built on the Cumberland River. So for those initial investments of what were, that's the, basically, probably over a billion dollars for that river system. And so the rates are set to recover those initial investments and the operations cost. That's how the rates are set, full stop. Now, going forward, however, under this customer funding arrangement, they redirect your rate revenues, instead of going to the Treasury for repayment and operations, they are redirected to the Corps for use specifically on capital projects that you, we guys, you know, we direct them to spend, which is this rehabilitation program. And just a clarification, that 300 and something million dollars that was shown there on the presentation, that is for CIPA as a whole. The Cumberland River, which is what's affected here, is roughly 60 million a year of the 300.
What? Sorry, did you talk a little more about, sorry, I was, I was snapped through one, we were reducing digitally, or I rushed over here real quick. Talk a little more about the term Treasury, you may have mentioned that earlier in the presentation, but just define that for me a little bit.
I don't, I couldn't understand your question.
The term Treasury that you used, could you just define it, what it means in this context?
Oh, it's the, it's the federal Treasury, I mean, the US Treasury. That's where the, you know, for example, when you get appropriations from federal funding, it comes from the Treasury. The, you know, CIPA as an organization was set up to market the power and then refund, if you will, through the rates, the federal government or the US Treasury for their initial investment. So when you say it comes from federal appropriations, in this case, the Feds, the US Treasury, they're getting their money back, it just takes a long time, because it's, you know, like depreciation. So I'm not sure if that helps, I hope that helps, but that's how the federal hydro program was set up. It's funded by the US Treasury at the initial construction, but then it's repaid from the customers that received the hydropower.
Okay, and you might have covered this early in your presentation, but deferring maintenance will lead to larger issues, and so paying back that Treasury slower by continuing to make sure everything is operating properly is basically what you're asking for, right?
It's, what we're asking for here is 100% capital items to be spent for rehab, the refurbishment of the, like, the old hydro facilities that are there. For example, Center Hill, they've got three 45-megawatt units there, they have refurbished them completely, they're brand-new from top to bottom. In fact, the, what they call the turbine runners, if you will, that's the impeller that turns when you're generating power, it had never been out of the assembly there, it's installed in the mid-'40s. So, I mean, again, but these are 100% capital projects for the rehabilitation, the operations and maintenance piece of it still comes, or is funded through appropriations, a small piece of it.
Okay, and without these maintenance...
The operations and maintenance piece of it still comes or is funded through appropriations. A small, a small piece of it.
Okay, and without these maintenance, we could have power outages from these facilities as turbines potentially wear out or don't work properly, right?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, that's what's been occurring over the last few years. For some of you, you might remember the facilities at Wolf Creek and Center Hill, the actual dam facilities themselves were, had some seepage problems. You can substitute leak. All dams leak, but they had some serious seepage problems that made it impossible for the CIPA and the Corps to fulfill its obligations under this contract. So in fact, 2007, they claimed the force majeure. We operate under very reduced benefits from 2007 until those repairs were completed. I think it was, part of them were completed around 2014. Wolf Creek was repaired first, Center Hill continued on until I think the normal operations resumed in January of 2020.
Okay, and then I think to Steve's question, you're asking for, I assume, another 25 million like you've been for the last periods, but what if everyone doesn't agree to it? Do you come up short? How is that shortfall made up?
It's not made up, it just takes them longer for the ones that do participate. For example, the revenues associated with your 15 megawatts would not be redirected, but the revenues from all the other customers would be. So it would just take a little longer to accumulate the monies to get the projects underway.
Okay.
And so for, or maybe Vent, you can answer this. So for next budget year, when we're budgeting CIPA revenue, to us, if we approve number 11 and under this arrangement, what does that do to our revenue stream in fiscal year 22, 23?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Brown, but I don't think it does anything in 22, 23. My understanding of the conversation is if we didn't approve it, then if we don't approve spending, they've still got to spend 25 million dollars. There, our money would go back more toward the original repay and the other folks' money goes toward the 25 and it slows down their ability to do that. But all of these expenses do affect our rates over time. The more we spend, obviously, the more our rates go up. And, you know, this April, there's a small increase from things that were done previously. So, you know, the more money that all the CIPA folks spend on the dams, they do affect the rates going forward.
And we're not making, and we're not making an expenditure per se. We're basically, the way we're paying for it is in the way of reduced revenue back to us, right?
That's correct.
Catherine?
You responded to Mr. Cubine's question a little earlier about not being optimistic on getting some of these federal appropriations. Is there, I mean, what can we do to incentivize aggressively going after these federal appropriations?
My comment was based on the Corps' feedback. I mean, it's not like they don't aggressively go after it, they just don't have very good luck in getting it. That's been the MO for years, regardless of which program might be out there. So, I mean, it's not that they won't go after it, but they haven't had good luck in the past. And this, again, this, if they did get some appropriations, then the amount they would need from these customer funding arrangements would decrease, of course.
Okay, is there some kind of report about the activities to get the federal appropriations?
It's an ongoing process that they have to do that.
I mean, it's kind of a, just follow up on Catherine. I mean, it's kind of an awkward situation for a federal agency like the Corps to lobby the federal government for its own money. And from what I counted here just in one, it looks like there's maybe eight, at least eight states involved. And it would just seem like that would be logical somehow to put together something for those states to also help lobby on behalf of CIPA or the Corps to get that money. Because like I said, it's difficult for a federal employer to lobby the federal Treasury for its own money. I mean, that's kind of a strange lobbying situation for grants. I don't think federal agencies apply for themselves for their own grants. But I'm just saying that's something that maybe y'all ought to explore. I know we're not going to resolve that here tonight, but I would think that y'all want to look at maybe more aggressive strategy to follow up because, I mean, with 1.1, 1.2 trillion on the table and water projects are definitely one of them, it would seem like that might be an effort to do that because that's certainly an important asset to citizens and to this part of the country.
Agreed.
Have the other members already agreed?
Yes, there's actually no one that's a party to the arrangement that's ever opposed to any of these things. That's kind of the way the structure is set up. Each, each customer is what they call a member of the Project Control Committee. And then there's a subset of that, it's a Project Review Committee. And I think I represent 17 of the 24 customers on the Project Review Committee. And we review these projects, make sure they're consistent with the rehabilitation program. And again, remember, the rehabilitation program was jointly developed with customers and CIPA and the Corps to address the decreased reliability that was being experienced because of these older units. So this, the customer funding of the program is kind of a unique way to do it. But like Vent was saying, your participation in this, all that really does is allow your revenues to be redirected to the Corps for the funding of these projects. And without doing that, your revenues would go to the Treasury like normal. The other thing to emphasize is that as hard as it is to believe, your participation in this customer funding arrangement or not, doesn't affect your rates. The rates are affected by what the operations costs are and the capital that's invested, regardless of where it comes from. Okay, so that's kind of the thing to remember. Regardless of where the capital comes from, where it comes from customer funding or whether it comes from the US Treasury, the capital that is invested in the program as a whole is what drives your rates. And that is going to go up over time, but that's the only way you can preserve the, this is a resource to use it. I mean, without the capital investment, your superpower will go away.
It seems to me like if you have a member group and pretty much everybody's already approved this and you're applying for federal appropriations, that one of the questions, you know, would be in getting that funding, is there, is there other funding coming? And the answer would be yes, the members have agreed. So, I don't know, I just, there's something about, it's not quite making complete sense as far as going after the federal appropriations. The need to repair and do maintenance and all that good stuff, that makes total sense. It would just be great to know that we're in the best position possible to get federal appropriations.
The thing to remember there is even if you did get the federal appropriations, to pay for all of it, it still would go into the rate base and you'd have to repay that over time. That's, that's an interesting way that the federal hydro program is assembled. Is even if you, even if you got a favorable appropriations, it goes into the investments that are recoverable. So they have to, you know, put that into rate base and send it back to the US Treasury eventually.
Okay, and let me just try to sum up my understanding of this. It's very complex. It's basically like a large loan that's being paid back, but the terms are flexible. So if money needs to be pulled back from the repayment of the loans to go toward capital, the terms of the loan just get pushed out longer. But what you're saying is the loan's coming from the federal government. So any additional money coming from the federal government just goes to the bottom line of the loan? I know that's sorry, a gross simplification, but is that pretty close?
That's exactly what happens. There's a whole series of these, they're set up on the repayment plan I talked about earlier. The repayment plan is actually put in place to repay those initial investments or any investments. And then ends up being how you determine the rate. So yes, the future appropriations would end up looking like a loan that's repayable with interest.
And I'm going to make it even grossly simpler. So we bought a car and we had a car payment on it. And we were driving the car around and we weren't maintaining the car and it started breaking down. Well, suddenly you're paying on a car you don't, can't actually get service out of. So thankfully, we, the federal government can be flexible with us to allow us to move that money toward fixing the car.
I mean, certainly, I mean, I, me personally, I mean, I think we need to make the investments, we need to keep that up. And I think we need to, obviously, and from my, I think we need to approve this. But I guess the one thing, and I understand exactly what Jason said, but I guess what I don't understand is I understand a little bit about federal appropriations. But if the federal government makes a grant out of an appropriation, like if, if we apply for grants for electric charging stations or whatever, and we get cash and they give us cash to pay for investments and retire that investment, that debt, I'm having a hard time understanding the federal math as to how that still ends up costing you money in repayment. I mean, cash is cash. And if you owe a million and someone comes in and pays off half a million of your debt, you've only got a half million left, you don't have to keep making a million dollar payment if half of your debt's gone. I mean, it would seem like they'd reset the rate base, I mean.
Yeah, well, I think he's saying that the same person who you're paying the million to is giving you half a million so you still owe him.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, Vent, are we correcting that? I'm sorry for being.
It's not quite an arms-length transaction.
But Vent, I did want you to chime in just for a second because you mentioned that anything will raise the rates. Is that because the full cost of the loan keeps going up and therefore the rate kind of goes up with it incrementally?
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Brown? I mean, any, any capital that's spent, any money that's spent refurbishing these, all of it keeps going into the total cost of the dam and therefore your rates.
The total amount of capital, think about that, is whatever capital is invested in the system would have to be recovered through rates, again, regardless of where it comes from. But now the cost of debt is pretty low. I mean, some of the, some of these, either the long terms are, you know, 1, 2, 3% on the books. So that's kind of the way that it's whatever the federal internal long-term loan percentages are. So it's not, it's not necessarily the cost of the debt, it's the amount of debt. I hope that helps clarify that nuance.
Ms. Cubine?
Yes, sir.
One thing I like, I'll put in my two cents, correct me all in here. Overall, you look at a KYME portfolio, CIPA is relatively clean, low cost. Particularly, you can use that for the peak, he makes in that, you know, you can dispose. I mean, you can schedule, feed it the most time you need it and the flexibility. And also it is 100% renewable. I think there's a lot of value. But overall, relatively, they are still fairly low cost compared to other resources.
And I don't have any problems, I mean, my question is it just somewhat perplexed that if they went and got a large federal grant to go in and do a lot of renovations on that project, how that wouldn't somehow benefit us and ultimately our customers in lower rates? Or rates not going up? I guess that's the part that just, I mean, I understand it's the federal government loaning one part of itself money and repaying it, but it's just interesting that, you know, other projects that got money around the country could actually lower debt, therefore lower rate or stabilize them. But it sounds here, no matter what happens, even if the federal government increases appropriations, you still can't outrun them, they're still going to raise your, it's just, it's kind of an interesting, interesting math equation. But I don't, we're not going to solve it here. I mean, it's part of an agreement and this is other cities. I mean, does anybody, I guess, I mean, I think obviously we want the CIPA. I mean, it's a good deal for us and it's been a steady source, we're part of this with other cities. And so there's no question about that, but, so, I mean, does anybody else have any other questions or? I don't think we're prepared to tackle the federal budget tonight. I mean, it'd be a fun exercise, but do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
No, second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Agreement's approved. Thank you.
Yes, sir. If everything goes as normal, you'll probably see me back again late this year for sub-agreement number 12.
Well, it'd be great to see you around Christmas, that'd be good. So, thank you. Next item, this is informational. This was a report that was presented to us earlier, we accepted it, which is normally our practice to accept a report that we, that's been submitted to us. We contracted for this and this is a presentation, it's not a public hearing, it's a presentation on the contents of that report to give us and the public a better understanding of what the contents are, what some of the options are and some things we might want to consider for a later meeting. So this is a presentation of the 1898 and Company Rate Design Report in consideration of a public hearing, 1898, and staff to discuss. Travis? Yes.
Thank you. Didn't have my microphone on. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Craig and then we can get into questions. Let me see if this works. I don't think the clicker was working.
How many hundred slides do you have, Craig?
I think there's 30 some.
Okay.
I tend to talk fast, so maybe we'll get there pretty quick.
Okay.
It's good to be here, thank you for having me, it's nice to actually be here in person. I've seen quite a few of you on Zoom calls recently and it's nice to actually be face-to-face with clients again, so. Again, my name is Craig Brown, I'm with 1898 Co., which if you're not familiar, that's the consulting division of Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company, visiting here out of our world headquarters in Kansas City, so.
And you might give it just a real quick, Craig, just a little history, how big's your firm? What all types of work you do? How many states, customers, that type?
We are a global firm, primarily in the United States. We've got about 10,000 employees. We're in the four to five billion dollar range in annual revenues. Very broad-based engineering, a lot on the power side, water side, but also aviation, food service, transportation, very diversified engineering. My background is not engineering, I'm more of a finance background, I work on the consulting side. So I'm a project manager in our financial analysis and rate design group. I've been doing financial consulting for over 20 years. The last 17, 18, it's been focused solely on utility systems and primarily public power. That has been my specialty. So I do a lot of financial planning, cost of service, rates-type work. So just a brief overview, what we're going to talk about basically is in the report. A lot of this, like I said, is informational. There've been some specific rate design topics that Frankfurt Plant Board asked me to review and opine on. So we're going to talk about the current rate structure, we'll go over potential rates for primary service customers, we're going to talk about value of solar rates, a green tariff, we'll talk about municipal and in-house rates, LED lighting rates, and finish up with rate design for EV chargers. So we started out kind of broad, we just kind of took a broad look at how your rates are structured now, how your customer classes are structured now. And you have, you know, primarily one, you know, residential and primarily three commercial classes. You have a general service, large power, and large power, high load factor. Residential and general service structured very similarly with just a moderate customer charge and everything through an energy charge. And the large power and the high load factor rates also have a demand charge. And then the municipal rate is structured very similar to general service and where it's just a customer charge and energy charge. So one of the reasons we looked into this is there has been some complaints from customers as they get transitioned from the general service rate to the large power rate. And the breakpoint of that is if you are 50 kilowatts in peak demand a month or more, a certain number of times in a year, you'll get moved up to the large power rate. And so one of the ways we look at that is like we will evaluate what the bills are on both rates at the breakpoint, which is 50 kilowatts. So you'll see we ran three scenarios across the top at varying load factors. So basically the same 50 kilowatt peak, but with 10,000, 15,000, or 20,000 kilowatt hours. And what you'll see in kind of the second section is that with a fairly low load factor, which is pretty typical of a small commercial customer, you know, that doesn't, uh, have really steady load, um, at, at a ten thousand kilowatt hours, their bill is actually twenty-nine percent higher under the general service rate or under the large power rate if they got moved. And then as you go up in load factor, um, at forty-one percent load factor, you're paying six percent more under large power. And then by the time you get to scenario three, you're actually paying less under the large power rate with a fifty-five percent load factor. So what we looked at is we tried to figure out what that breakpoint is, and it's actually at forty-eight percent. And so that says your load factor has to be forty-eight percent or higher to benefit and not to pay more under the large power rate. And that's a pretty high benchmark for a small commercial customer or me- medium commercial customer at fifty kilowatts. So that stood out to us, um, as, as we were going through. The next one we did is we looked at large power versus large power, high load factor. So you have a high, high load factor rate that's basically, you know, currently large power is anything above fifty kilowatts. And to get the high power or high load factor rate, you have to be at least a thousand kilowatt hours and have a, uh, load factor above fifty-five percent. So we looked at that and the way the rate is structured, if I go back a couple, you'll see that it simply has a, it has a higher customer charge, but it has a lower energy charge and a lower demand charge. So while having a high load factor customer on your system is very valuable, especially with your power supply situation and having a high CP demand charge, it's really, the way the rates are set up now, it's just a discount all, all the time. So anyone would wanna jump, obviously, to this rate, um, if they're anywhere close. So basically, it's about a six to seven percent discount, um, no matter how you slice it with whatever the load factor is. So based on the, that analysis and that overall review of the classes, we're making two, um, recommendations to consider. First, we think, uh, there's the need for kind of a, an additional class in the middle of the commercial side. And kinda, we, we would probably structure it somewhere between fifty and five hundred kilowatts. And we'd recommend having a, calling it general service demand. So keeping the, the energy-only rates for just the smallest fifty and KW and below, but having a, a middle class there, not so much as large power, that would have more of a moderated, it'd have, probably have a lower demand charge than large power, higher energy charge. It kinda bridges that gap, um, as customers transmit, transition higher, um, in load. I think that would be good as far as transitioning between classes, um, but it's not something you can just jump to. It's gonna require some further analysis to figure out what that right point is and also what customers would be impacted. So for now, it's something to consider, uh, in the future.
Would it be appropriate, Travis, or to ask just a real quick question?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Ask questions as I go, by all means.
Like, what's, I mean, I think I understand what a large customer would be like. We've got, uh, several large retailers here.
Yeah.
So they're gonna be, I assume, large from a customer standpoint.
Travis, you, you, like, say, say a large grocery store. Are they in the two, two fifty, maybe, kilowatt range?
A big box store would be large power, large power, high load factor would be a real manufacturer, a real factory. So the, the HLF grade is a, a pretty small group of customers.
And then I, I think I know what a residential is, but like, what, like a restaurant or a small convenience store?
So they're, they're probably going, probably gonna be under the fifty. There'll be general service. Uh, but yeah, cause you, and you think like a, a gas station or something, a small commercial is gonna look a lot like a residential customer. So they'll mostly be in the general service.
Did any of you, I was, I was just trying to get a feel for, okay.
Okay. Um, so a recommendation for the high load factor rate is to, I generally will structure these to where they have a significantly higher demand charge than what the large power does, but a much lower energy rate. And the reason for that is that way, the, the more their load factor increases, the lower their average cost goes down. So they get an incremental benefit, whereas the way it currently is that it's just cheaper all the time. Um, I would recommend having a low, a high load factor rate of about seventeen fifty a kilowatt for the demand charge. And if they're a high load factor, they're, they're gonna be able to have no problem with that. But someone who's close, it would, would harm them. And then drop the energy charge down to about four and a half cents. And that way, you know, put it at around fifty percent load factor, so, cause obviously sometimes they may bounce around. Um, but that way, incrementally, the more they go from fifty to sixty to seventy percent load factor, um, that's gonna drop their overall unit cost down and their savings compared to the large, large power rate.
Okay. Um, I've, I'm familiar with load factor in a lot of different ways, but can you just describe exactly how you're using it?
So, so think of it as, as your peak relative to your average demand. So if you had, um, if you were a ten kilowatt load and you're, were ten kilowatts every hour of the month, seven hundred and thirty hours in a month, that would be a hundred percent load factor. If you fluctuate up and down and you average, say, five kilowatts over the, you know, sometimes you're ten, sometimes you're two, sometimes you're zero. If your peak was ten, but your average over the month was five, that'd be about a fifty percent load factor.
You base it on a fifteen-minute interval, so of all their fifteen-minute intervals, what percentage are, and what load, and that's how you factor that?
Think about it. If you're in a small retail shop, you know, you're only open eight hours a day, maybe, or something like that. It's really hard for them to get over that, say, thirty-five percent load factor because they're just not open all the time. They're like, their, obviously, lights are off during the day and no one's there at night.
But if you're a factory.
If you're a factory and have two or three shifts.
If you're running one shift, you're down in the evening and night. But if you're running two shifts.
Then that's gonna increase your load factor, yeah. And this is to benefit people like that because with having a, a CP-based demand charge for your overall power supply, you wanna, you wanna encourage high load factor from your customers. And so this is the way to give them a little bit more, instead of the higher their load factor is, the more they benefit from it.
Okay. So you're saying low kilowatt hour cost, high load factor cost?
Higher, higher, higher demand, lower energy cost.
So in theory, you're shifting that two-shift factory to a three-shift because they're like, well, hey, let's.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, they could benefit from that and that's, could be good for this town as well.
Makes sense. Great.
On what you're recommending, which is different than what we're currently doing, what do the majority of utilities, how do they do it? Are they doing like you recommend?
This is how I usually design it. I've actually had some, you know, some utilities will have a separate, um, power. They'll have a separate riders for fuel that's a pass-through. Um, I've done some that's just completely on the base rate side. The non-fuel side is just a demand charge. And then the, the fuel becomes a pass-through, so. But yeah, this is, this is generally how I structure these and I've done these for other utilities before.
Other utilities, I can, I mean, from an economic development standpoint, that's, I mean, we're interested, I think, you know, obviously, we wanna be fair to our ratepayers.
Yes.
We certainly, although it's a smaller part of our customer usage, you know, the resident, we got a lot of residential customers on fixed income, so forth. We wanna, I mean, obviously, to the extent we can protect them. And we wanna be able to attract new business, especially big employers. We wanna be able to retain what we have, attract new ones. And so what's that old adage, if it isn't broke, don't fix it?
Yeah.
Do we have something that's broke?
I don't think so. I don't, I, I don't think, I don't think you're doing any harm by having it the way it is. So I think if, to answer that question, no.
So if a big employer came in here, I'm not saying like a Toyota, but to say if a big employer came in here, well, we've actually got one that's gonna be going down on Myrtle with, I think, what, a couple hundred employees, Ben? It's gonna be going in the old shoe factory?
I believe that's correct from whatever industry.
Yeah, so for a new employer coming in here, gonna be using a lot of power, are our rate structures, would that be a hindrance to the community to attract new employers? Or would they just say, you're no better, you're no worse than any other city? We're gonna look at other things. We'll look at education, transportation, everything else. Utilities is a non-issue. You're not better, you're better in some, worse than others. It's fair.
No, I think, I think utility rates definitely come into play for economic development. Um, and typically, when they're looking at it, they, they'll look at the bottom line, okay, what's your average dollars per kilowatt hour?
Uh huh.
And break it down for me that way, and I want six cent power or seven cent power or whatever it is. Um, this would actually be, with having that lower energy charge, someone who has a high load factor would actually see this as more attractive than what you currently have now.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the flip side of what you're saying, if you have a customer who's, falls into this new rate you're proposing and they're paying a, uh, they're paying the higher demand, they may wanna mitigate or do some load shifting to drop that down because they're not ready to take advantage of it and expand it.
Yeah, there's, there's two triggers you could pull. You could lower your peak demand or increase your kilowatt hours relative to the same kilowatt demand.
Okay. I think it's pretty nice.
I'm, I'm sorry, but.
No, it's great. Good questions.
But, but John, dude, to your not broken, I, he, what I think he's saying is there's a little bit of a a dead man's zone or a little desert here in the middle of our rate structure, so. It wouldn't hurt us to add this other piece because it does give, as he said, it incentivizes customers either start moving up or it shifts back at savvier about how they use their demand because.
Yeah, I think there's two pieces. The, the general service demand recommendation is really to ease that transition for your mid-size commercial customers. Cause that, it is, it's a big jump to go from currently from general service to large power. And I think that actually, I think does require fixing, if you will, more so than the high load factor.
Okay.
The high load factor is more of a recommendation. This could improve it. It's definitely not broken, though.
Yeah. And then everybody I've ever heard about economic development beat me over the head is, you get the Toyotas once, you know, a generation, but then the small businesses that you grow up.
Right.
Yep.
They would be running right into this, so, okay, that's cool.
But you mentioned that there were complaints from customers.
I think that's what initially brought it on, is people was, cause you'll get moved from, say, general service to large power automatically based on, what is it, hitting over fifty KW four times a year or something like that?
It's an annual review, so every twelve months we'll look at your annual demand. If you go over that fifty KW, you move up to that demand. And that's, that's kinda where the pain point is. For some customers, if you have the, the low load factor, if you move from that general service to the large power and it's based on the tariff, it's laid out how the formula is, uh, that's where we get some of those pain points. Not so much on the high load factor, but on the, on that general service demand, jumping from, you know, your small business, no demand charge to all of a sudden you do have a demand charge based on that annual review, that's where we have some customers.
So you were talking about our customers?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think trying to avoid that twenty-nine percent jump if you have a low load factor, that's, that's the pain point and you'll hear about if your, your customer bill goes up by that amount for the same usage.
We'll do more than hear about it if we jump up twenty-nine, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Hearing out, hearing about would be the least of our problems, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the rate class structure? Okay. We'll talk about, uh, primary service rates and really primary service discounts. So when we talk about primary versus secondary, we're really talking about voltage level. And, um, you know, generation that comes through a transmission system that can be, you know, one hundred and thirty-eight KV, sixty-nine KV probably locally. And you run a thirteen point eight KV or kilovolt system, that's your primary distribution system. And then when you drop it down, it's what we call the secondary system, that's kinda your laterals in residential neighborhoods, things like that. And, uh, that, you know, when you drop it down to residential level or four eighty or two forty, something like that, that's called secondary service. So basically, rates are based on providing secondary service. And occasionally, a customer will want to be served at a higher voltage. They, they have a factory or something, they can take their service at a higher voltage. Or, um, they want to be metered further up the system and have infrastructure behind it kind of all aggregated together and just have that one metering point at a higher voltage. Um, so you've had some customers inquire about that and you have some that are that way now. And the way it's, it's generally structured and the way this is actually stated in your policies and your electric manual is anytime a customer takes service at a primary voltage, and that's usually, that means that if you have a transformer that goes from thirteen point eight to four eighty or whatever it is coming out, four KV coming out, um, the meter is set on the high side of the transformer. And then typically, the customer should own everything behind there, behind the meter. So they should actually own the transformer and anything else behind that if it spreads out to different buildings. And for that, because they own that information, generally, primary service customers get a discounted rate. And it's for a couple things. It's for the fact that you will experience fewer line losses, uh, like, from a percentage basis, by not going through more transformers and heat loss and longer lines and things like that. And also, they're using less of the distribution system. So generally, there's an acknowledgement of that. They're not using those secondary poles and things like that. So there's usually a discount for primary service. That's if the customer owns the, the infrastructure behind the meter. And just as you stated in your, in your manual, um, all conductors, transformers, poles, as may exist, are owned and maintained by the customer. Ownership by the plant board terminates at the metering point. The customer may tap his facilities and make his own extensions for his own use. That's the way most people's reads. And I would say you, like most places, doesn't, you, you have some primary meter customers that you still own and maintain what's behind that meter. And that's not unusual. So you've had a customer that has inquired about going to a primary service rate that has, um, significant infrastructure, what would be behind the meter and multiple, it's, you know, multiple buildings and locations, almost like a secondary distribution system behind what their single metering point would be. And effectively, what that does is it's going to totalize all their load. So instead of having individual, you know, peaks at each building, it's all gonna be combined into one coincident peak. So that's gonna benefit them. Instead of paying a bill on each meter, they're gonna be able to, uh, save significant dollars there alone by having that one meter. And that's really why most people want to do this. So our recommendation is, is, it's not so much a recommendation here, but an acknowledgement that the right way to do this is if someone wants to be a primary meter customer, they should own that infrastructure that's behind the meter. Um, and that could be done a, a couple of ways. One is to, you know, outright purchase the secondary distribution system. That's fairly unusual. Some people might want to. But you could also discharge them a facilities charge per month that represents the capital and the maintenance of that infrastructure behind the meter. And that's probably where most people go with this. Um, if you wanna be a primary meter customer, sure, and we'll give you a discount from our stated rates based on what parts of the system you don't use and line losses. Um, but you need to effectively pay for all that infrastructure behind there, the capital of it, and then the ongoing maintenance if, if the plant board is still recommending or still maintaining that equipment.
Well, that was a question that John Snyder had, who's one of our board members who couldn't be here tonight. Um, and I tried writing it down as I was going down East Main. But he had that very question is, if you went to that system behind the wall or behind the meter, then there is a value to those, that assets and equipment that we've invested in and that we would recover that through some type of charge?
Yes.
Okay. Cause that was his question. And then we would also then, would we maintain it then in the case of failure or problems, or they would then own it and have to repair things that went on behind the wall?
That's to be decided on, on a contractual basis. I believe the way it happens now is you're still maintaining anything behind the primary meter for any customers that do it now. So, so really, this is an acknowledgement that of, of the way things should be done.
Okay.
And, um.
And John was asked about, not so much for a new customer who might come on and wanna do that, but for an existing customer. Okay.
Yeah. And then, and I think the answer on who pays for those facilities behind the meter goes into the answer of what kind of discount does that customer get? Because at the primary meter, you will have two to three percent less line losses and that can be factored into a two or three percent discount rate. Or the way I prefer to do it is you actually reduce the kilowatt, the actual billing units, not the rate. But if they're, if you're still maintaining the facilities, then I wouldn't add an additional discount related to the parts of the system they don't use, cause they're still using it.
So that could be, uh, costly effective to the, to the, to the factory?
Yeah. Basically, the, by combining all their individual loads into this one spot, they're, they're probably only paying one customer charge instead of many.
Well, I understand that part, but the part about, uh, either bank or leasing, leasing, uh, the system behind the meter, but the infrastructure behind, they, they still could see a savings. Is that a short term, in the short term, or does this way down the road savings?
If they, no, it's, it would be, well, it'd be, assuming that if they bought something upfront or made a capital contribution, it'd be definitely longer-term savings. But you would be able to justify a bigger discount by not including the pieces of that secondary infrastructure that's part of the rate now. So you could have, you could adjust their, you could make a discount for the losses plus the infrastructure. So they may, they'll be paying less in the rate for that piece, but paying either upfront or the monthly facilities.
And is that a pretty popular, uh, arrangement with a lot of bigger customers?
It is. Yeah, I think you generally, you want, um, you know, some cus- utilities will have a pretty hard line that says if you wanna be primary metered, do you literally have to own everything? But it's pretty common to do, have kind of a facilities agreement. And a lot of these customers are, you know, they may be government entities or something that has, you know, there's political will to, you know, give them a discount, things like that. That's very common in other places I've seen.
Who would be the normal customer in that arrangement? A, a big industrial like a Ford Motor Company or a General Electric or like a school system or?
So, yeah, and I've seen, and I don't like this, I've seen some people, like, if you just have multiple locations, like a school district, they'll totalize those, even though they're at different locations. I would very much recommend against doing that. But usually, it's a, a facility with, you know, probably, they, they have different feeders like a Ford or something like that where you've got, you know, three different load centers. like a Ford or something like that where you've got, you know, three different load centers that are running different parts of the factory and just getting those all combined up into one where they're, they don't have to, you know, pay three customer charges and three separate demand charges. It's all just that one coincident peak further up the system.
Yeah.
So that's how they benefit mostly.
And then the way you're describing and you may mention this is a case by case basis, right? It's like a direct contract?
It is, and I think that's, you know, it's a, it's a policy consideration on how do you want to handle these going forward? And it's a, you know, you can be very customer friendly and allow, just let them be primary metered and still make things behind the system. And, but, and when I go, but like I do a lot of public power and you just got to go back to, you're a, you're a not-for-profit entity. And if you're giving a discount to someone, that's got to be made up by someone else. So it just goes all of the, the policy consideration on how you manage your utility. All right, next we're going to talk about net metering and value of solar rates. So currently you have a net metering policy for customers that are generally residential and small commercial customers. If they have installed photovoltaic solar on their rooftop or on their sites, that you'll do net metering, which effectively means their meter will spin forward or backward depending on if they're taking power from the grid or exporting it back to the grid. You have an annual limit on your net metering policy of one percent of your annual peak demand, which you haven't hit yet. So this, this is not a very impactful piece yet. And it's also limited to thirty KW or less systems, so smaller sized systems, commercial. I'm not a fan of net metering, but considering it's one percent of your system, I don't think it's an issue for you yet like it is in some other communities. But we were requested to develop a policy for larger customers and commercial customers that want to install solar projects that are greater than thirty KW that don't fall under the net metering policy. So we evaluated a couple of other alternatives to net metering. We looked at, and both of these require kind of bidirectional metering where you're tracking the imports and the exports and what they use. We considered buy-all, sell-all approach where literally the customer doesn't really get the use of their solar. It's like if it generates, you're buying it from them and then they pay for everything they get from the utility. And then we also considered a net billing or net export approach. And I'm actually going to talk about this more in the next slide because I kind of have a graphic. So on the left you have net metering. It's just one kind of line that goes backward and forward. Under net billing, the customer, what they generate and use completely stays with the, the home or the business. And everything they receive from the utility is tracked and they pay for that at the regular retail rates. The difference is instead of, when they export the meter just going backwards, that's actually metered separately from what's going in. So you're actually metering what's going back out on the grid. And that's compensated at a different rate that's more commensurate of the value of that solar. So then it's the term, it's an avoided cost rate, but it's referred to as a value of solar rate. Typical avoided cost rates would just be the pure variable cost of fuel, which is about in your system, your KYMEA rate of about two and a half cents. This, going through a process of looking at value of solar considers other things in there and other benefits that that solar can provide to the system. And kind of goes on a line-by-line basis and you can make a decision, a policy on how much you want to include to value that solar piece as you, as it getting exported back onto your grid.
Would you mind, are you, have you seen that billing I've, I've heard down in, in the southeast? They're doing, they're starting to move in net billing a lot with the munis down there. What's your, do you mind if I ask what you think of it?
I like it actually, because I like, I think that buy-all, sell-all is too extreme. What I like about net billing is the customer gets full benefit of the system they invest in. And everything they generate and use, they get to, they get to enjoy. What it does is it keeps people from oversizing their systems just for the point of selling back onto the grid. Because under net billing, or under net metering, you're overcompensating at the full retail rate.
Okay.
And they're basically, it allows a customer to use the, use your grid like a battery.
Right.
And they're just pushing it back on by oversizing their needs and pulling it back up when the sun's not out.
Okay, and I was actually, sorry, you, you have a spectrum here and you've only shown us half of the buy-all, sell-all is the more extreme.
Is the more extreme, and I didn't really, I didn't really consider it for you.
Yeah.
Because I, because it really doesn't give the customer the value of what their investment is.
Right.
So I did not consider that.
So you're generally.
I'm a net billing guy.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes.
What are the majority of utilities going to?
They're going away from net metering for sure. And, and if you look at the places where there's the most solar, I mean, California's on net metering three-point-oh and they've, they're on third generation away from net metering now because there's so much and it has caused, you know, issues with cross subsidies amongst classes. So, but there's definitely, I mean, people are moving either towards net billing as an alternative or just going through a concept I think I talked about in one of the reports, which is unbundling and charging separately for your distribution costs and your transmission costs. And eventually getting, if you have all customers on demand charges and they're paying for that distribution piece through a demand charge, then you, you would probably be more, more okay with them net metering because the energy rate would be more representative of the true variable cost of power and you're paying for the distribution piece for another charge. So, but net billing is the transition rate to get there. Because obviously most people are not, not comfortable putting demand charges on residential yet.
Okay, and then I just want to, I like your, I like diagrams, but I just want to make sure I'm a hundred percent on the same page. The export meter is only for the overage of which you're currently not consuming.
Correct.
I just want to make that.
Only, only when they are generating more than their, their home is using.
Okay.
And it goes back out on the grid.
So it really is the hybrid of the net metering and the buy-all.
And the buy-all, sell-all, yes.
So if I'm a homeowner and I put panels on my roof, this would basically mean if, on a great day, and if I generate extra, then it would go and I actually will pick up some revenue or some discount on my power I use otherwise.
Yeah.
If I'm a large, say I'm one of the distilleries in town and I put in a huge solar operation, work the same way that.
And, and this is really, this is applied to just the bigger customers.
Okay.
Commercial. I don't think, from, from my conversations with the management team and staff, there's not, you're not trying to get away from net metering because it's less than one percent of your system. It's not a very cost-effective, it does cause cost, cross subsidies within the residential class. But I don't think it's harming your system yet.
And when you say harming, define what harming the system means.
So when, with net metering, you are giving credit for that export to the system at the full retail rate. They're getting, basically getting paid ninety, nine-point-eight cents per kilowatt hour for that. And that nine-point-eight rate includes a lot of fixed costs that don't vary with kilowatt hours. So they're basically getting paid at a rate higher than that. So what happens is your revenue goes down, which push upwards pressure on rates. And then the people that don't have solar, which are generally the people that can't afford to put on solar, end up with increasing rates to cover the subsidy of the people that are, can't afford to put solar on their home.
But because it's less than one percent, it really hasn't, doesn't have much impact on the bottom line?
I would, I mean, if I was, if you asked me directly, I would say transition, grandfather who you have in now, if you want, switch everyone to net billing, even if residential would probably be my recommendation if you asked me.
Um, the, so on net billing, I'm assuming it's more like the wholesale rate that's being paid back?
It is, and that's the analysis we're going to walk through is, we're going to take a look at each piece of what your cost structure is and apply a value to each piece broken down into production, transmission, distribution and so forth.
Okay, and then I just want to make certain, and I still haven't, I'm new to the board.
No, it's fine.
So I'm still catching up here. The wholesale rate based on the flat wholesale rate or a time of use wholesale?
Based on your KYMEA wholesale rate. So, and we're, we're going to look at this in a second. So your KYME rate, KYMEA rate is a demand charge, it's additively about eighteen dollars a kilowatt and an energy charge of two-point-four-seven cents. That's kind of the true variable cost of power for Frankford. So I'm going to take a step. Okay. And this, this is what I just talked about. So understanding your power supply rates. Power supply from KYMEA is about two-thirds of your total cost for the system. So it's the majority of it. And it's really the part you don't control. You know, you do your budgets for distribution systems and customer service, things like that. So all the members of KYMEA have the same, all the, all requirements members have one energy charge of two-point-four-seven cents. And then you have one build demand charge of fourteen dollars. That's basically for the generation piece. And you have pass-through of some K, of some transmission charges as well. The build demand and the Ku are all on a coincident peak basis, so that one coincident peak during the month. I believe the MISO is actually a non-coincident peak, but effectively it's an eighteen-dollar combined demand charge. So you're very much cost-driven by that fixed one peak hour, peak fifteen minutes during the month. So the, the value of solar is a, like I said, it's a concept to kind of assign a value of these different components. And it's, it's basically you're valuing your avoided cost of power. So instead of, by you accepting that energy back on the grid, you're not paying for it from somewhere else. Common things that are included in, in value of solar rates. So you've got the avoided generation energy, avoided generation demand, avoided transmission demand, avoided distribution demand. You'll notice that there's only one energy piece on there. Everything else is really, does not vary with the number of kilowatt hours put through the system. It's all peak demand driven. And then there's a couple other costs such as avoided distribution capital investment. If you're, if the load you're putting back on is, is making it so you don't have to invest in another substation down the road, that's positive. The, the opposite side of that is also potentially true. If you have a very strong concentration of solar customers in one area and those sites are oversized for their needs and they're pushing all that energy back on the system at once every day, you might have to incur costs to upgrade your lines and be able to handle that capacity and upgrade your transformers. So there's two sides of that. And something else that can be net impacted, is considered in some, is environmental benefits. Now, there is no carbon tax right now. But this is where the, the analysis gets more subjective on what value do you place on the environmental benefits of having that solar on the system? So we looked at this from kind of a technical approach. So the orange graph, we actually modeled a solar system in Frankfurt. We used, I'll talk more about the model itself in the next slide, but the orange line is the typical solar profile. It comes on late morning when the sun comes up, but percentage-wise it's very low. It peaks around noon and then tails off from there as the sun's going down. The blue bars are the time of your system peak throughout the year. And this is, there's twenty-four data points on here. And generally in the winter, you peak at about eight AM. And in the, in the summer or the, you know, shoulder period, it's usually around four or five. So, point being, you're never peaking at noon when that solar output's the maximum. It's always in those, when it's tailing off one, one side or the other. So what we did is we used NREL's system advisory model. And what that is, is we were able to, it's a, it's a national model that's free. You can have, get access to it. And we modeled a hundred kilowatt system located in Frankfurt, I think, at this building, just to get a view. And I worked with some of the people that are working on community solar to set the parameters. What it does is it puts out an hourly profile for an entire year on what the output is because it'll model weather in Frankfurt on an average basis. So you'll see it'll vary from day to day, hour to hour. It'll model a cloud going by, things like that. But when you look at that in aggregate, it's going to show you what could be expected out of the system on those days or over a whole year on average.
Um, kind of, just sorry, when you were talking about the, the peak in the last slide, you don't have to go back. What orientation, azimuth orientation was that? Is that directly south or closer to?
Uh, it's pointing south, yeah. And I, I have the, it was a fixed tilt system. I'm going to say a thirty degree, fourteen percent losses. I, I could get you the whole.
Well, I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if those panels were oriented closer to the west, they do lose a little bit of power, but they do line up possibly at the peak closer.
Sure.
Okay.
So, and yeah, but I mean, we did model it still because if you have actually a tilting system that are tracking system, they would actually increase the energy as well, so.
Okay, cool, sorry, just asking.
No, it's good, good. So what we did, we modeled a hundred kilowatt system because that way if you look at the output at any time, it can, you would have percentage of the stated capacity. So what we did is we looked at the actual time of your system peak for the last two years. And when we looked at what time that occurred in the month and then we looked at what the output was in the model at that, at that time. So the two columns to the right is, the, the one that says PV output at peak, that's the specific output at the specific time you peaked over those twenty-four months. But since that's going to, you know, vary, the, the last column is if you peaked at eight AM in February, we averaged every eight AM in February to see what the output was there. So it's a little bit more reliable to use the last column than the first column. What you'll see is you, you're getting about in the low twenties percentage of output at the time you're peaking. So that's something we use considering in valuing the demand component of this. So with this, we wanted to use it to base the, what is the value of the generation piece with the KYMEA piece? So the energy charge is a hundred percent contribution. So that's, you know, you're getting full two-point-four-seven percent avoided cost there. And we used the analysis of the solar in this last column. The average over the twenty-four months was, the output was about twenty-three percent of stated capacity. So we say, let's make that be the percentage of credit the customer get when they're exporting to the grid for the demand piece and the transmission piece. Now, in reality, they probably wouldn't be outputting that much because if you're in a peaking situation, they're probably using that power and not exporting. So this is kind of the, they would probably be not this high, but for the purpose of this analysis, we think this is appropriate. So if you take the demand charges, convert that rate to kilowatt hours by using, I think, the system load factor. And so you convert the fourteen forty is actually about two-point-eight cents per kilowatt hour on average. Take twenty-three-point-four-six percent of that and that's the production, generation, demand piece of your value of solar rate. So you're going to add that to the energy piece. So if you come down to it, that, that kind of those last three, that's your contribution from generation energy, generation demand and transmission. And that's basically, that's all the KYMEA costs only. Now, and then we get to talk to the other pieces. There really is no change in your distribution costs based on whether solar is, is importing or exporting. The way you determine your distribution cost is you have to size your system based on the maximum peak whenever it occurs, the non-coincident peak. And you can't fluctuate your, the size of your transformers or the size of your lines on a, you know, a month, the month basis. So you have to figure out what that peak is and size it and that's what you have to recover. Those costs don't vary month to month. You know, you've got that fixed payment of the capital and maintenance on that cost that basically stays fixed because that's what you budget for your employees to maintain that equipment. And then we talked about earlier, there is a chance that there will be savings on deferred capital investment for distribution. But there's also an equal chance that having solar concentrated would cause increased cost. So for this rec, this part of the system, we're saying there's no part of value of solar for the distribution. And then final piece is environmental. And I think this is where it becomes a policy consideration. There are no tangible environmental costs that the Frankfurt Plant Board pays currently for environmental costs. There are real costs that, and there are real benefits that solar has in decarbonizing our future and it is a positive thing. I can't tell you what this number is though. I think that's more of a policy decision that if you want to add value of the environmental benefits of solar, you could make a policy decision to increase that by a certain amount and have a higher value of solar rate as that avoided cost rate.
Has other utilities that you work with come up with a value, a number to put in that box?
And, and some include the distribution side as well.
Just an example of.
I would say the two most common examples of value of solar rates that are very liberal as far as they, they add a lot to the credit is Austin Energy in Texas and Minnesota Power. They both have very detailed analysis that supports their, and they update their value of solar rate annually. So that's, that's a good example of a lot of things you could consider.
I assume both of those are public information?
Yes, yeah.
How much have you modeled if this was take, if we looked at this and it was, we suddenly got into the ten, fifteen, twenty percent larger customers? Like we, we do have some large customers that make up a large part of our portfolio. If they were to jump on this, have you modeled what that could do? Does it put the plant board in a better position or?
With this, I think, yeah. This basically, I don't know if protects is the right word. It allows more solar on the system if you use this approach. And I think that's why I like it.
Yeah.
And I think that's why I like it. Because the goal is to make sure customers are paying for the services they're using from the utility, and compensate them appropriately for what they're putting back on the system. So I think by making that compensation appropriate and not subsidizing distribution costs, this makes you more comfortable in letting more solar on the system. So effectively, what this says is the avoided cost rate, based on this analysis, would be three point three six five cents per kilowatt hours, what you would pay the customers for anything that's exported back to the grid.
Well, and, I mean, as you were saying with your last rate class analysis, is, you're really incentivizing the customer not to go crazy with solar, you know?
And I think that's part of the issue I have with net metering, is they are incented to oversize their system. Because it's, you know, they're just gonna, if they're gonna keep getting credited at nine and a half cents, why wouldn't you build more?
Well, and of course, that's a thirty kilowatt cap, so they can't.
Yes, and that's why that's there, and that's why people have percentage caps of peak demand, which are absolutely appropriate.
Now, is this analysis, though, just dependent on the current status of batteries at this point, development of batteries?
I think batteries is, is going to help the customer, basically, that's gonna help them even more they wouldn't be exporting. And it's even more of a reason to not allow net metering, because you don't want any of that power. You don't want them, whatever it takes to not get them credited at the full retail rate is what it comes down to. Because that's where you will end up having cross subsidies within the classes, and people that can't afford solar are paying more, even though they can't afford to do it.
Let me ask this, I just got a feedback from this in the sub-boards, if we kind of had four objectives, if we wanted to be less dependent on fossil fuel, if we wanted to be fair to all our customers, and especially not harm our low-income customers, and not shift costs to them, and encourage Frankfurt growth for both residential, jobs, and then the future, is this the policy you go with?
In my opinion, this is, this is the approach. And if you want to, and this is, and this is where you kind of play with the policies, is if you want to encourage more solar, then pay them more for that. Justify an environmental piece of this, give them a piece of the distribution, that will attract more solar.
And how, where's the bump, where's the, where's the guardrail or the stop sign? Or is there one to where the seventy-five or eight-year-old retiree on fixed income, who's, you know, struggling already that we don't harm them?
I think this, this gets you there, because you're not, this, for the most part eliminates the subsidy, because the key in all this is the distribution piece, and paying for that. That is a big piece of that nine and a half cents, it's probably, you know, a third to half of it. I think that's really what protects them, the, your customers, from being overcompensated. And then, then it really gets to where people are paying for the costs and the services they're using from the system.
I don't want to be unfair, but, Vince, have you all agreed with that?
Yeah, I think generally, that was the approach, kind of going into it, is that we wanted to, to be fair to the customers, that we, we know we have customers out there that have systems that would, this policy would apply to. We needed to do the fair thing and compensate them something, right? We don't want to essentially, you know, it was for free. But try and approach it in a way that it's fair to all customers, right? It's natural reflection of our costs to buy power elsewhere. That's kind of what, that's kind of how I look at it. If we buy it somewhere else, I think that was creating my way of saying that.
No, it's, I mean, it's really, it's, that's why they call it an avoided cost rate. If you weren't, if you weren't taking it from that customer, you would, you would be buying it from KYMEA. So, it's, that's why.
I think it's, I think it's pretty easy to see, if you take it beyond your one percent, two percent, let's say you had, you know, you had a ninety percent solar or something. Now you're buying ninety percent of your power at nine cents rather than three or two, and you can quickly see, now everyone's costs have gone up because you are no longer buying power at this cheaper rate. And you've, you've gotta add your piece on to that now, to take care and maintain the lines. I think it's pretty easy to see, that's what happens. Again, I believe when you, when, when you fairly attribute the components to where they belong, I do believe you, you incentivize. Because just like we've seen in the States, in California, and a lot of places, certainly Arizona, Nevada, those places have a lot of solar, when they exceeded those small limits, it quickly became apparent that you are subsidizing. When you're less than one percent, or you have a small amount, it doesn't really show, because you're talking about so much as a small dollar amount. But you move to these larger systems, they've all had to make the adjustments. Again, I think largely what we're talking about here, not so much maybe as messing with the, with the net metering that we have for residential right now, as it's such a small piece, but there have been those requests for larger pieces of solar. And how do we tackle those? Because those will quickly make an impact to your rates, and you really would start to subsidize. You know, if you're subsidizing fractions of a penny, that's a whole different ballgame. When you're trying to get people involved in solar, understand what it is, and learn its use, that's, that's different than, you know, my extreme example, ninety percent, where everyone's cost is now through the roof, and you're actually just, if all those people are customers, you're just hurting yourself in this cycle.
Actually, what I understand, we talk about here, really is not a residential net meter. This is the commercial, industrial, maybe we talk about one or two customer currently have a system in place, and we don't have a policy to address the energy they flow back to us currently, which is not fair.
Right.
That's exactly what we addressing here, is we should reimburse them fair amount.
Over thirty KW.
Yeah, over thirty KW. This is not to address anything about a residential net meter policy, which is, the board, if you want to do, that's definitely, we will happy to look into it. This is strictly for commercial, maybe only to customers, as I know today, maybe have a positive impact, we understand today.
What's the upper limit for, that you guys were proposed for this, the size of the
I don't know that there, I guess if you got to a certain size, you would be dealing with, you know, more than you actually need on your system. What are you, about a hundred and thirty-eight megawatt system?
Yeah, hundred and thirty megawatt peak, and, Craig, we had talked about, you know, trying to right-size into the customer's native load, right? So if we have that disposable data, that's maybe one indicator. You know, if you put a certain cap on it, that would exclude large customers, that's probably not what we're trying to do. So if we could approach it from, you know, the customer's right-sizeing, if we look at their actual facility and what their usage would be, maybe that's the approach.
Yeah.
We may want to put some upper over-shilling at some point to get, you know, to avoid system line issue or anything. But, yeah, I think that was the approach we kind of started with, is look at the customer's native load, is their system size based on their actual usage?
Yeah. But I mean, if you have a four megawatt customer, and they want to put up a one megawatt solar array, I mean, it's gonna, it'll cause lost revenue for the system, but that's okay. They have the right to do that, and they have their own environmental goals to reach, corporate probably. And that's, that's fine. That's where, that's where things are going, and that's gonna help decarbonize the future, so.
Yeah. And then Travis, it occurs to me that AMI system, when it rolls out, will be very helpful in helping customers understand orientation, what the best usage is of, and then really what size they want to do, eighty percent, ninety percent of the load, or, yeah?
Yeah, exactly. It's, it would, that's definitely a data-dependent determination, which is a little hard to do with one monthly kilowatt hour charge.
Yeah, of course.
You know, most instances where we would be looking at these types of systems, will have that, we should have at least monthly demand data, or, of course, get them down to more creative level.
But, and I just have one last piece I'd like to add here, sorry. This is.
That's good.
Very passionate about this, is, I was wondering if a board, we can talk about those environmental benefits, either, not really too much more now, but just in the future, because I do think there is a value to that. We were obviously looking at solar and other things, so if we could sort of have a conversation about what that value might be to help incentivize.
I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to tell you what it should be, but I can help guide you on what other people do, and what other things have been considered.
I think, I think if people are moving in that direction, we need to support them on some fiduciary level, so.
One thing I probably don't want to make things more complicated, but, but KYMEA this year started looking for, reflect their cost on their bill. They are looking for increased energy cost, which is like a two point four seven cents, maybe potentially can be two point eight, and reduce the demand, because, because they want their hundred megawatt contract ended, they have a new respend, replacing the costs is lower, so they're gonna reflect the cost of the capacity lower. I assume, you know, his study based on the true cost, I just want you to know that the potentially KYMEA cost will change based on their current cost portfolio.
And, and people often will update these things annually, based on the actual cost of your system.
Yes. Potentially can increase that three point three. That makes sense, you all. You know, could be increased like another point three or point four, depends on, you know, just the two point four become a two point eight, that's automatically already increased point four. That's the only things I want to add on this.
Well, thank you, that's a very complicated topic.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
You did a very good job.
This one's a little bit more straightforward. So, but I'm kind of the same veil. So, I'm gonna talk about green tariffs, the potential of creating a green tariff for the Frankfurt Plant Board. These are very common up around the country, they're, and they're fairly, they're structured similarly in most places. And they really are based on the purchase and pass-through of renewable energy credits, or RECs is what they're referred to as. And a REC basically is a representation of the renewable attributes of a renewable generator. And it's equivalent to a thousand kilowatt hours of renewable energy. So one REC is, say, what a typical residential customer may use in a month, you know? So basically, this is a way for customers that want to support renewable energy, but can't put solar on their roof, they don't want to make the investment, they don't have the right angle of roof, things like that, but they want to be able to say, I want to support renewable energy, so I'm willing to pay a little bit extra for this. And a green tariff allows people to, to basically buy blocks of renewable energy to offset their own use that may be supplied from something else. And generally, that's, that's how they're priced. You basically will set, oh, so, RECs are generally certified, so there's, there's a company, I've got the logo Greenie, it's probably the most well-known one. They will actually go through a process to certify the RECs, that you know that, they, they do the legwork basically to know that there was a megawatt hour of renewable energy produced, and it was from this generator at this time. And so you know, if you're purchasing RECs through Greenie, that they have been certified, you can tell where they came from, there is a, you know, a tracking of what that came from. So you know, you have confidence basically, that you're, you're investing your money wisely. But they can also be self-certified. So if KYMEA builds a solar farm, and it's part of that in their fleet, they can self-certify their own RECs and pass those along to potentially Frankfurt customers or other all-requirements members. So, slight difference in cost, obviously, as Greenie charges for their services. But it also, Greenie can give you access to a market, because these are basically market-based transactions, and the market price varies from month to month. And it's been definitely more volatile over the past two to three years. So, and the last bullet is, basically, because you don't own generation, you would have to buy RECs to establish this program. Like I said, so basically, green rates, you're basically selling blocks, and you can, you could build them in pieces as large or small as you want. If you want to sell, you know, two hundred and fifty kilowatt hour blocks to your customers, you can do that, and then you're basically getting a portion of or a fraction of a REC at that point. But ultimately, customers would subscribe to a certain number of blocks they want to buy on a one-time or generally a monthly basis. And then, the plant board would then go out and purchase those RECs on their behalf and retire them, which means that customer gets the renewable attributes of that renewable energy. The cost of a REC, you know, for, for the longest time, it was, the old adage was, you know, one REC is about one dollar. A thousand kilowatt hours is about one dollar. I would say now they range in the eight to fifteen dollars per REC range. So it's definitely, they've actually gone up. I think there's a lot more demand for people wanting to say, you know, make statements that we are a hundred percent renewable. I know the city has a goal here, that. So a lot of people are purchasing them, it's a market-based transaction, so the demand for them has gone up. Granted, the supply of renewable energy is increasing at a very fast rate as well, so. But that is one thing that should be considered when, when you're initially doing this, is getting some indicative pricing at the time to establish your program, so you can price them appropriately for your customers. Just as an example, Louisville Gas and Electric has a green tariff, and they kind of have a, they do blocks, one for residential, small, commercial, and, and one for large industrial. Basically, you can buy one block for five dollars, and that's a little bit over one point two six RECs, they say, on average in their tariff. So they bought them at a better price at the time. And then for the larger ones, you're basically buying in thirteen dollar blocks, but you're getting about four RECs per block. And also, in talking to KYMEA, they are actually structuring, they're building their own green tariff right now, that will be available to all member communities. So, depending on how fast you want to move on this and what their timeline is, this could be an option for you to just simply use theirs, because they will actually manage it for you. They're going to call it Power Green Kentucky. They will self-certify their own attributes and pass it on to the member communities of KYMEA. And from, from the information they've provided to me, they want to structure it basically exactly like LGD's was. So they kind of have that same pricing structure for a small block for residential, and a slightly bigger set of blocks for large customers. Program's in development now, but as far as the exact timeline, there's, they're not sure, so. Any questions on that? I think there are third-party vendors that can help you manage the purchase and the marketing of them. You can, I mean, you can go on Greenie's website, you can see, you know, all the places that are selling them. But there are, there are people that can help you manage it, you can try to do it on your own, but it's, we can certainly help you with drafting the language for the tariff.
No?
No?
I'll say one thing, it does occur to me, I'm sorry, I don't want to create administrative work for anybody, if we were, if we did have some large customers start to take the program we just talked about, we're selling their power back, we could actually have local RECs, if we had a more expanded program, we could almost drop those in.
Maybe. The REC is created by who owns the generator. So if a, if a commercial customer had a.
Anything they roll back to the plant board, to kind of.
No, because they're actually generating it. I think, I think all the RECs would stay with them as the owner of the generation.
If I just like to say about the environmental, like, if I'm very reflective, if I was a REC, are you purchasing the right?
Yeah.
You're giving the environmental attribute, you're giving the power as well.
Yeah.
I'll just leave it there.
No.
The administrative side, if we were looking into this program, and we've had some customers want to do that, and there's some power rolling back, you know?
Yeah.
Have other communities done that? Other?
As far as putting the price of the REC within the value of solar? Or, I'm not sure if I've seen that. I don't think that's priced in the ones I've seen. But there definitely are other justifications for the environmental piece that we can look in.
I mean, one part is that KULDE already have a green tariff in their portfolio for many years. And I think there are so many utilities have a green program. It's strictly volunteer, customer don't have to pay, but they can choose to say, I want my energy a hundred percent come from renewable. This is the way to certify the process.
Yeah, this is, it's like, costs you nothing, it costs customers that don't participate nothing. Your, your customers that want to support more renewable energy, you're making a transaction, sharing that cost with them.
Is there any reason, I mean, this is informational hearing and that, but I mean, or informational meeting, and is there any reason not to do it?
No. No reason not to do it.
Yeah.
It's a, you're providing a service for your customers, and the ones that want to will participate, and the ones that won't, won't.
I, I just briefly calculated, based on our average residential, how much they use, if we are, reflect the same like a KULDE, roughly cost to residential per month, like a four dollar. If we are reflect the same like a KULG, roughly cost to residential per month is like a four dollar twenty cents per month. And also, I roughly calculate city, like a city Frankfurt, they wanna go to a hundred percent renewable by this way, but it's strictly volunteer. Uh, based on that, uh, four point two one block, right?
Yeah, the.
For the, yeah, four point two based on that thirteen dollar, roughly for city will be like thirty eight thousand, thirty eight thousand six hundred ninety dollars.
A year?
Thirty, no cost.
Thirty eight thousand a year, or?
Thirty eight thousand annually.
Annually?
Yes.
And if they did that, they could claim they were supporting their load with a hundred percent renewable?
Correct.
Just because the right hundred percent.
Right, that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's why these are so popular, 'cause you're basically, you're be able to purchase enough RECs to offset your system, that offset your usage from, that might have come from fossil fuels. Okay. Next topic, I think we only have two left. Uh, the review of your municipal rate, and basically your, this is your in-house rate. And, but it's also not, it's like the, the inter-office rate that the electric utility charges, the water utility and cable, things like that, but it's also a government rate. And so this rate applies to all city of Frankfurt facilities, municipal sewer board, uh, all city and county schools, and the Franklin County Fiscal Court. And just as a reminder on the rate block, so this rate is structured almost identically to the general service rate, where it's an eighteen fifty customer charge and an eight point nine five cent per kilowatt hour energy charge, which is slightly lower than the general service. So effectively, it's a discounted general service rate. Um, so our, our view on this is having municipal rate and having that rate applied to government offices is absolutely appropriate. It's common, and it's, it's something you do as a policy decision. Um, but I think it's important to understand the financial model, and we've talked about this tonight, uh, that, that Frankfurt Plant Board operates in. And that's that, you know, most of your power supply costs are driven by peak demand. And all other distribution and administrative in general, and your, your, your non-power supply costs are effectively fixed. And as a not-for-profit utility, that any discounts that are, that go to one group have to get recovered for other groups. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a zero-sum game effectively. Um, but there's nothing wrong with having a municipal rate that's discounted. There's nothing inherently wrong with having, you know, school rates and government rates being less. So, 'cause that ultimately, that's fewer costs that get passed on to residents some other way. Um, so what I would say is, I think it's appropriate, because of the way your power supply is structured, to have a municipal demand rate and not have just the energy-only rate. Um, even for, you know, internal usage, for something like the, the water plant, probably has a, a pretty significant peak demand that may be, you know, impactful and not getting costs recovered. Um, so I think just based on that, I think it would appropriate to keep, you know, keep a energy-only rate for small commercial customers, fifty kilowatt and above. But for people that are above fifty, I think it's appropriate to have them on a demand rate. This is potentially impactful to groups like the school district, because schools generally have low load factors. Um, so I think anything, anytime you make a rate change that is impactful, I think you go back to the rate principle of gradualism. And that's that, you know, you don't wanna have any kind of rate shock when you change your rate structures. So if you did make a change like this, I would recommend phasing it in over time, starting with a lower demand charge and getting up to determining what discount you think is appropriate. Um, but as an overall recommendation, I do think, based on the way your system costs are structured, it is appropriate to have a municipal demand rate of some sort.
Why?
Then, I'm sorry?
Why? I mean, when you say it's impactful, that's another word for cost more, right?
It costs.
So why?
You're not recovering your cost. And actually, when we look at the EV analysis, I'll, it'll go very clearly see why.
Okay, so if you do that, okay, then in theory, based on your analysis, you're saying other customers are subsidizing the schools and the cities.
Correct.
Or city. So if you do that, how much of a, how much relief does residential or other people get from making that shift? Or is it basically de minimis and it won't? We just, we just hit the schools and the cities for more money, and everyone else still really doesn't see a rate decrease?
I, I think that, that almost takes a, a more detailed analysis of understanding cost of service, where it is now. And it's been a while since you've looked at cost of service.
Yeah.
So I can't answer that definitively. Um, and I don't think you necessarily have the demand data on all these municipal customers. And you probably have meters that can track it, but I don't think you're track, you don't have that, you know, in the billing system now, because you're not paying on a demand rate. So I don't think you know at this point what type of subsidy there could be.
And what's going on, like, say, in Louisville or Lexington, anywhere else? How, are they doing it the same way?
Well, Louis, any place that Louisville would not, 'cause they're an investor-owned utility that serves them.
Right, and so is Lexington?
So there's no government discount there.
Right.
But, but it is very common, in, in my other public power communities, that there is a discount. And some, I think I, you know, for schools or, and I've seen some as much as twenty percent, you know? So it is a, it becomes a, a policy decision. You know, you're not gonna give them a fifty percent discount. You're reasonable people. Um, but I think, thinking through the amount of discount they're getting, and I think that the EV charger analysis will be a little bit enlightening to show how it could be harmful for how you recover your costs from them now.
But based on just preliminary, or maybe then your Travis, just high level, is the amount of discount to municipals, school districts, and that sufficient enough to give other rate pairs relief? That they would see meaningful relief?
I doubt it. I don't know, though.
Is that, here's a question, not actually to the game actually. Here, how long does this rate then, like, do you just for? I mean, this is for other, for the, for other rate.
I've, I've been around here since nineteen eighty-nine of some degree or another, and this has been here since, since I've been here. There used, there, there still is. There, there was a gratis rate that was the Frankfurt Plant Board's bill to itself, and there was a municipal rate, and over time, the gratis rate was actually even lower. Over time, we matched the gratis rate to the municipal rate, so that the plant board charges itself the same thing it charges the cities and all the other municipal organizations. Uh, as far as I know, they've been here for most of the entire time.
I'm looking at K S U, when they're education institution, and now they're just really. I know that the staff that they do it, you're into, but I'm just curious as, as, as to why K S U would have a benefit group.
I think these municipal rates were tied directly to the city-county, not necessarily the state or other organizations like that. None of the state agencies are in the municipal rate, um, or anything like that.
What are the state agencies paying?
They pay the, the whatever class they fall into, high load factor, high load, all that kinda stuff like that. I think one advan, one advantage, or one thing I would say, even, like, right now, without, since a lot of these city meters don't have a demand rate or a demand charge, excuse me, we don't have any data on it. Now, the AMI meters, all that stuff comes with AMI meters. You can start to find out what, what their demand really is, which we don't know in a lot of cases. I mean, we can make estimates, but not really detailed. So your AMI is gonna give you more data going forward. I think one of the key things to understand, if you apply a demand rate, even if it's say much discounted, or a demand rate that keeps their rates very similar to where they are today, having a demand component is a much more accurate, and I think, better way to bill, because you more actually, you know, reflect the charges someone may be incurring on, on your system. So even if you put a demand rate in that, again, doesn't necessarily change their rates, but it just breaks their bill into two more accurate components, is a, is a plus, in my opinion, even, even if you didn't change their rate. But to, to me, the demand, let's say that you have a school system, and they wanna lower their demand. Right now, they have an energy rate. There's, it's not reflected in their demand. So, you know, they don't see that necessarily in their bill. This lets people start to do things. The city has run into this same kinda situation. If they make changes and they lower their demand directly, it's not really reflected in their, their bill. So it does allow you to start to recover this kind of, or see.
I, I assume what he talked about is, in the future, as a policy, you could say, I want the municipal rate class have a revenue mutual to plant board. Then you can have a different kind of demand, the revenue, energy, then to plant board, we don't have more revenue from this group, but you still can charge them fairly. But we don't know that yet. I guess, I, I know you're gonna ask us question first is, what's the impact for each of the customer? We, we wouldn't know that until we have a demand meter, we say, AMI, help us. In the future, once you're not system in place, a year or two, you can ask the same question. We can give you exactly answer, you know?
Yeah, did you hear?
Well, is it correct that, if, so if you add in a demand rate, it would potentially incentivize, um, energy, um, efficiency?
It would, so they're actually incented for energy efficiency now, because it's all based on energy. So reducing kilowatt hours is what gives them the benefit now. Having a demand rate would encourage them to be more efficient with their load. So they encourage us to reduce peak demand more than it does reduce kilowatt hours. Um, but energy efficient measures do that, so. And, and you could have demand response programs, and you could have incentives for that, to do that, and pay people for, you know, demand response type activities.
But reducing peak demand is really, in the end, what's gonna, um, help the plant board.
Helps everyone.
Buy less energy.
Yes. And anyone, any customer reducing their peak demand, that coincident peak, benefits all customers. And that's why the incentives to, to, to increase load factor by decreasing that band, but keeping the energy where it is, that, that benefits everyone, based on how your power supply costs are structured.
And always just a real fun I use is one, if your customers, the whole reason to manage, you wanna line them, but then how kind of case for their power?
Yeah, that, and that's really, you know, if we were doing, I, I would be hammering home cost causation if this was actually, you know, doing a cost of service study. I'm a purist. I think everyone should pay exactly what their costs are, 'cause I'm a numbers guy, but, um, I, I play in the real world too, so.
Steve, do you have anything?
Okay. Actually, I have two things left. So we did, and, and I won't spend too much time on this. Um, we looked at your LED lighting rates. So over the, you know, recently, you've been converting your system from, um, mostly, mostly high-pressure sodium or HPS lighting to LED street lights and area lights. And, um, so typically, I think what you're currently doing is basically charging the same for the equivalent light it replaces. And that actually works most of the time, because LED lights have a higher upfront capital cost, but they use less energy. So there's, the, the fixed piece is higher, the variable piece is lower, and it often comes out the same in the end. Um, so we took a look at it, and I was able to leverage prior cost of service studies specifically for this that I have, and run it through some models that I already have, to come up with kind of a bottom-up cost-based rate for your current LED lighting costs. So this table just shows, you know, what the LED lights are in the first column, what light they replaced, and then what the actual fixture costs for the LED, the installation cost, the cost to go put it in service, and then the combination of those considered the, the installed cost or the capital component of this. So when, when I do streetlight cost of service, I basically look at the following things. I look at the casp, capital cost of the fixture, which we just looked at. And that can include, you know, the pole, the photocell, all the different components that go into that. Um, the cost to place it, and that includes the labor, the truck, the benefits, everything. Um, there are maintenance costs associated with lighting that, you know, HPS will burn out every five years or so, and you've gotta run a truck out there to change the bulb, and that has a cost. And then obviously, you've got the power supply piece of it, and then your distribution costs to deliver the power through your system, and the administrative and general costs that go along with that. Um, so we looked at all of that. Uh, we based capital cost recovery for the LED lights on a fifteen-year life, which is pretty typical. And we kinda factored in the demand cost at a fifty percent load factor, 'cause on average, they're on twelve hours a day, twelve hours off, average throughout the year. So from a capital recovery standpoint, um, the table at the bottom shows how much should be recovered per month for these lights. Um, we use kind of a fixed charge rate model over fifteen years. And annually, so for looking at the first row, the fifty-three watt LED, you need to recover thirty-four dollars per year over those fifteen years to cover the capital cost. And that comes out to two eighty-three a month. So that's that piece of the bill. Um, and then the delivery rate, which encompasses, uh, the power supply from the Kemba, I'm sorry, from KYMEA, you know, at nineteen kilowatt hours per month, and add in a rate, you know, an average delivery rate for the power through the distribution system, things like that, that comes at two eighty-six a month. So the cost-based monthly rate for that one is five sixty-nine. And you can see, we went through all these on a, for each one of your lights, and basically came up with a cost-based rate for the LEDs. And compare that to what your current rate is, so that the top table's the same as the prior page. Um, and the bottom rate is, shows a comparison to your current rate. So you can see for the smaller lights, actually, your, the, the cost base rate is lower by a fair amount, almost four dollars. But when you get to the larger lights, um, you know, you're about, almost spot on with what you're charging them, so. So not necessarily a recommendation to do anything, but it's the analysis to kinda show a cost base. If you wanna know how the LED lights cost you relative to what you were charging before, this provides that information if you wanted to make any changes.
I mean, this is, I mean, in theory, eventually, all the current lights get replaced with LED, right?
Yeah.
And how long will that take then? For that, how many more years?
Uh, one thing to keep in mind here is we're talking about security in area lights that people call up and ask for their home, and they pay a monthly charge.
So these aren't streetlights?
Streetlights. This, this is not streetlights.
Okay.
Streetlights, do you know a percentage of how many we've changed out so far? I mean, we've done different. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
No, it seems like there's a couple thousand traditional fixtures, and maybe a few hundred, somewhere in that range. We're on a regular replacement plan, so if the light fails, we, I'm talking about streetlights. If the light fails, we go out and we'll replace it down. You can see anything.
These security lights that we're talking about in area lights here, a customer calls and says, I would like a light at my house, farm, whatever. We're gonna be pulling an LED out of inventory, put it in for them. That's why these rates, they're, they're gonna actually have an LED, and it would go into effect. The streetlight, and their bill, these are billed monthly to, again, to recover the cost of the lights. The city streetlights are billed based on a kilowatt hour charge and they, how long they're on, which is totally different than these. These are not charged on how long they're on. They're just charged a monthly fee. So adjusting these, if, if need be, would actually reflect what the customer has going into. You know, they have, they bought a new light, they have an LED, you know, maybe the adjustment should happen. If, if you have an old light, you're not doing an LED, maybe it shouldn't, I don't know. But the streetlights are, are kind of a different conversation. Those are still being changed out. We are changing those out at a much more rapid rate than we used to change out lights in the past. And until we're done changing out the LED streetlights, I don't know that I would recommend making a change to those yet. And again, as they get more and more in, their usage goes down and down and down on the streetlights, so it's more reflected in their bill. We actually keep track of all the LED city streetlights and the non, and they're metered separately. So as this number goes up and up and up, the metering that's reflected in their bill, and as these goes down. So they're seeing the benefit in their bill every day already on the streetlights.
Okay.
Is that correct, or?
Yeah. On the LED part is, I mean, in the past agreement between us and city, it is not the capital come from the city. Actually, it's a plant board put our capital to replace those lights.
Right, upfront.
And, and the city can see from day one, we replaced them. They use less energy. They can see the saving from day one, but all the capitals come from us.
Correct. Right. It depends on what organization. It's never easy.
Like, I mean, the city don't pay us, right, to replace.
What is it? They pay half of the?
Yeah, if it's a new light, it's one thing. They pay half the material upfront for the rest of the year. If it's a maintenance, I don't think there's.
I'm talking about old current safety.
Oh, so if we're maintaining like an existing facility, I don't.
Yeah, I don't think they're paying. And so now, when a, when a bolt, when a driver, when something goes out, rather than trying to just fix that little component, we just take it down if it's old, and we put an LED in its place. So we're accelerating the replacement that way. But it's also being driven by mechanical failures, rather than just a wholesale change them out for no reason.
Now, for security lights and that, customers don't have, I mean, when it burns out, we, they, they get an LED, right?
Yeah, we, we, we operate and maintain those lights. They pay a month. They pay a monthly fee basically to not worry about it. They get the light.
Well, I mean, is there not, they don't have a choice whether they want LED or an older light. I mean, they get the newer LED.
They get the newer LED. Yes, sir.
This this is totally off subject, but the defective bulbs that we're having to go back and re-replace, who's paying for that cost? Is it the is the company that supplied the defective bulb?
Are we talking about the LEDs that are purple? That company is giving us, they're replacing the lights. But we're having some conversations. I think we, one of the new replacements actually went out again and it turned purple. So now we're trying to figure out, is this really, they supposedly was a, lights made between, was it 17 and 18, had a failure in them. So we are, they're giving us those replacements under warranty and we're putting them back up. But we saw one of the new ones fail again.
But we're paying the cost to go back again.
To go back and fill it up, yeah.
Is there any way we can try to get them to pay for that?
I guess we can go through the attorney. We're we're seriously, in the in the last week or so, been having conversations about, do we transition away from this supplier? Because if you're gonna, if they're failing again, I don't know. So that, that's a big question.
They see what warranties they have maybe or what, but it might, that would take, I'm just trying to think, the defective products and what kind of fruit that would take to to do.
Has there been any kind of class action with other, I mean, I assume they sold these bulbs to a lot of, they didn't just sell them to us, right?
Yeah.
I don't bet, I don't know.
It was an offering that anyone can buy, yes, sir.
I don't know if other, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if there's any, I'm trying to think newsletters on it. I've I've not seen anything on like the APPA legal or serving like that, but you know, where where there's.
We'll we'll dig into it more.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say we're talking about such a, I mean, I know people have seen the purple lights, but the amount of a legal battle over it probably wouldn't be worth what you would get. But we'll we'll double check into the contracts and see and let you know about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna transition to rates for EV charging. Majority of this is gonna be focused on public charging stations, and then we'll talk a little bit at the end about residential home charging. So you all have installed multiple level two chargers, which is kind of the medium voltage chargers throughout your system. And you have purchased and are plan to install a direct current fast charger, a DC fast charger, which is considered level three, much higher kilowatt hour, much faster charging. A level two is basically like what you would, most people do at home. Think of like a dryer outlet, 240, whatever they are, just that increased residential. That's basically the level two voltage that at most a lot of public chargers are now. Currently, the city of Frankfurt does not charge residents for charging. So they're giving the service a free and they're paying you for, at the municipal rate for the power. This is not specific to you, but a key issue for public EV chargers in general and rates for them. They rarely get used in in the big picture. They're they're just not, people aren't plugged in that much. There's not as many EVs on the road right now, and almost everyone charges at home because it's cheaper. Except in your case. So the result is there's very low load factors. So we're talking like 5 to 10% load factor. And you know, we're talking about the small commercials have make have a 27%. These rarely get used, so it's literally like a 5 to 10. And there's not really an expectation to go up real high even in longer term periods because they don't get used overnight, really, things like that. When chargers are in use, there's a good chance it's coincident with your system peak. If people are charging, they're out shopping late afternoon, they're going somewhere, they're plugging in. So it's it's a potential for there being on your CP, which, as you know, is an issue for you. And then obviously, the demand costs for that aren't covered in your current municipal rate, which is energy only. So we looked at, we kind of did another bottom up cost analysis on on what it costs you to serve these these loads. So we're gonna look at what is the capital cost of recovering the charger that you spent? What is the KYMEA energy and demand costs? And what does it cost to deliver that power to the charger? So looking at just, the the table at the bottom is just the capital piece only. So the a charger, a level two charger costs about $10,000. The peak output is, I used five and a half, it's five to seven and a half, eight, some five to 10 range, 5.5 KW. And then a level, a DC fast charger is actually a 62.5 kW. So it's a significantly higher voltage, and then they're about $45,000. So using a similar fixed charge rate like we did for the LED analysis at a 12 year life, we we were able to determine how much you should recover annually just for the capital piece only. And it comes down to about $87 a month for the level two charger and just under $400 a month for the for the DC fast charger, just to get your capital investment back.
Then we looked at what is the cost of power on an average dollar kilowatt hour basis? So left side's level two, right side, your your charge point, 62.5 kW, that's that's on order. So kind of the assumptions at the top, 5.5 KW, 10% load factor, and that's that comes out to 402 kilowatt hours per month. And we're saying that's 80% coincident with your peak demand. So it's it's sometimes on, sometimes off. If you break down your demand charges from KYMEA at that 10% load factor, it comes out to 20.67 cents per kilowatt hour. You've got the 2.47 cents for the energy piece. And then we estimated, so the kind of the all in cost for a month of KYMEA is about $92. So if you take the combined 23 cents per kilowatt hour for power supply, I just estimated a three cent per kilowatt hour for delivery and broke that capital cost, we figured out, divided by the number of kilowatt hours per month it's expected to be used, it's costing you about 48 cents a kilowatt hour for that charger. And as we know, you're being paid 9.8 cents for that. Um, level three is a little bit better because it's less capital relative to the amount of power it's using. But it comes out, you know, running through the same analysis, I actually put this one at 100% coincident with peak because obviously, at 62 kW, it's gonna be pretty significant spikes when these things are plugged in. And bottom line, if you look at the bottom, it costs you about 40 cents per kilowatt hour for those chargers at a 10% load factor. So providing this for informational purposes only, just to, I want you to know what it costs. I'm not saying you should charge the city 40 cents per kilowatt hour. But if you look at public charging stations, they're typically around 30 cents at a kilowatt hour now. And that's why people don't use them now. Yours, right, free service, I would be plugging mine if I had one. I don't have an EV yet, yet is the keyword. But so I was sharing this for for informational purposes on what it does cost you to provide the service.
If we be, if if there was a charge, particularly on the half, would you have a variable rate that's there on the day?
Yes, that's a great point. I would, you you would could do time of use, but it's basically you would, you can do a time of use where you have it vary throughout the day. And if you have that four hour window where we know the peak is, charge 40 cents. Or and then you could do much less, you could you could be fine with the municipal rate the rest of the time. So yes, very much so. The other way you could do it, and this is less customer friendly, is you could have a load control switch on it and just shut them off for access during peak times. So that those, you know, two hours you think you know you're gonna be sitting at the system peak, turn them off and don't let people charge. That would tend to upset people if they wanted to charge right then. So that's a less realistic option. But from from your perspective, you have to either control that peak demand or recover the cost.
Let me ask this, and this kind of goes back to the discussion we had on solar. I mean, there's the environmental factor that if you want to encourage people to use less fossil fuel.
Absolutely.
And in theory, it's kind of like the chicken and egg, which comes first, electric vehicles or charging stations?
Yeah.
People want to go by electric if they can't find someplace to charge, you know, when they're out and so forth.
Yeah.
We're a public utility. We, and we had testimony, public comment from a citizen here in the city last month about, he was concerned that all taxpayers were paying for people who were driving EVs. And he made the suggestion that future EV investments, at least in part, ought to be from commercial vendors, hotels, shopping centers, who could benefit, a restaurant, who could benefit from people being able to charge while they're in need and so forth. In terms of trends around the nation, are you seeing anything in terms of, I know there's a lot of federal money to do EV charges going forward, but other than that, if that, assuming that wasn't there, who do you see putting these in right now? Is it public utilities for profit utilities or is it commercial shopping centers?
People started putting in their own systems and charging for them, and they have stopped. My my recommendation was to don't put any more investment in yourself. Let third parties come in and put in chargers. They can pay you the rates for it. And there is a truckload of federal money coming specifically for EV charging infrastructure. I would wait for that money to come and not put as much money in on your own dime because the federal money is going to be there. It's mostly centered around highway corridors, so, you know, around 64. You know, there's tons of money going in there. But I think from your perspective, as far as, so that, you know, the highway corridor covers transit people, people that need to charge on long trips. Almost everyone that owns an EV charges it at home because even the small ones have a 200 mile range. I don't drive 200 miles an hour, 200 miles in a day or a week, you know. People charge them at home. They come in, they plug them in. It's way cheaper than using a public charging station. So but there's not really as much of a need to have public charging stations for your residents. Now, you've provided it, or the city has provided it as a benefit by not charging for the service. So that will get people to charge on these public charging stations. I certainly would. But it's generally when you're when you're paying for public charging stations, that's 25 to 40 cents a kilowatt hour versus doing it at home for eight, that's it's a no brainer. And when I when I get to the residential side of this equation, there's a way to do it to incent even more and give them a greater benefit for doing it. So, but yeah, my my recommendation was to do not put more in on your own dime. I think I kind of just said, so majority of EV donors charge at home. And like I said, because it is expensive, I I think you should ensure encourage home charging. But you you need to do it in a way that controls peak demand. And you do that through, my recommendation, my preferred way of doing this is through a time of use rate, which you can introduce in all your classes. But I really like it for residential because you have to send an appropriate pricing because you have to send to, you have to get them off your peak and encourage them to do it when it's cheapest for you. So the way I like doing it is by actually having a three, use rate, by having an on peak rate for just those four hours a day, whatever the season is, and off peak rate for almost every other time in what we call a super off peak rate. This has worked really well. I know some friends, actually someone I work with designed the one for everything in Kansas City. She was the first person to sign up for it, but it really cost them, you know, less than $2.
Now, how long does it normally take with like the level?
At a home level two charger, you can get full charge in six days.
Is it possible to actually have like a timer on there? So if I get in at eight at night, you don't have to go back out at midnight? I think I had mentioned this maybe to Gary, but again, this is a little bit off topic. But in Florida, you could actually sign up to get a little discount on your bill if they, if you let them put Florida Power and Light put some control on your HVAC.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's, those are very common for air conditioning cycle. So those are very.
And I never noticed whether, I mean, I never, maybe we never hit a problem with peak in our area or something. I don't know, but I never noticed an issue.
But you know, whether it was a part of our scope, you know, type of use rates in general, once you have the AMI system, it can be very beneficial for you to manage your peaks. I mean, you almost marketed as a as a beat the peak rate where, you know, instead of charging you 9.8 cents for all kilowatt hours, we're gonna charge you seven and a half for most of them, you know, except for those four hours during the peak, and then you're charging like 25 to incent people to change their behavior, to not, to program that dishwasher to start two hours from now, to not run the dryer at 5 o'clock, things like that. It's gonna benefit everyone, they're gonna be able to, the more they shift, the more they're can can reduce their bills and see benefits.
Unless they have soap. Unless they have soap.
But you can also do it, not that, to a point, you can have on and off peak credits that you will pay them more for what they're putting on the board during peak time because that's reducing what you're taking in. Any other questions?
I just want to say I'm impressed I was, it's like almost two hours straight we're talking about energy. I'm surprised you're still standing.
I can talk about that stuff for days.
He's on peak right though.
That's all right.
Travis, do you or Ben, have you been bad?
Jump in and maybe summarize Ben, Gary's.
Thank you, Craig, for the presentation, all your work on it. I think Ben and I and Gary have talked about the report quite a bit. Obviously, we've had it for some time now. So of course, it's the board's pleasure how we want to approach all these different issues. From my perspective, I kind of see it in two buckets. There are fairly straightforward, simple policy decisions, decisions we could approach short term. And then I think some of these are gonna be more long term policy approaches. Value solar, for instance, we know we have some customers that could take benefit of that right away. I think that's one we could try and talk tackle right away. The rec program Craig talked about, we know we have customer demand for that. Primary metering rate, that's another one. I think we have the data in hand, we could, we could try and tackle it right away. Some of the other ones, the the general service demand, the the large power rates, it's been, was it seven, eight years going on, eight years since our last real true comprehensive cost of service study? So I think if we were to want to approach some of those issues, we would probably want to do a new comprehensive cost of service analysis to really understand exactly what those rates would be. Craig made recommendations that would give us some, you know, ballpark ideas, what it would look like. But we don't really have a fresh analysis and good data in hand to tackle those.
What does a cost of service study cost and about how long does it take?
They're they're lengthy, I would think.
Anywhere the data collection, something like that. Craig does them all the time. Yeah, it's like what I was saying. Depends how much you're doing. There's great studies are usually broken up into three phases, that kind of financial forecast section. You might not need that in a building on a long term plan. As far as just the overall cost of services allocated, those are the classes. So you could knock those out at a free once versus.
And roughly what's, roughly, I'm not holding you to it because one, we have to build it and so forth. What is the normal market price for a utility our size? Ballpark, just.
75,000. Then also, you know, how much rate design analysis?
Would that be affected by, or should we wait for AMI?
So a lot of the the accuracy in the cost of service study is based on 200 classes. You have a whole question on that. Very much benefited by having actual and not estimating or data for classes. So it would be improved results if we had AMI. But it certainly can be done with partial deployment, doing low research studies to get statistically valid samples in your classes now or estimate based on. Yeah, that would be, you know, and you have to think of what AMI, it's not just when AMI is done, if you need data for. Yeah. So there could be, you know, an internship, depending on how fast we're able to do that. Do an update based on best on information, come back in a few years and do an update. That would be with the actual system data. Don't you realize that? And any AMI will have data. Just just a side note, we keep bringing up AMI, but I think it's the real value that that, I mean, that just is, it's just giving us so many more ability to actually design things that are, can be, that's friendly and.
So the board had an interest in going, doing some of. So the board had an interest in going, doing some on the solar, the primary, the green, rec, some of that. That requires a public hearing right on rates.
Correct, any tariff changes.
Right, right. So to be fair, the board thing is to come back at the March meeting, in the March, we're at the, come back at April with some recommendations that are short term, that make sense, that would have minimal customer impact, with kind of impact for the board to consider if we wanna go that direction and have a public hearing. And then also come back and take a look at, do we need to go on and do the cost of service? Wait for the AMI or do, as you mentioned, doing some more selective targeted statistical sampling to let us do that and what kind of cost of that would be if we wanted to go in that direction? And bring that to April, is that favorable? Do you guys think that's a favorable approach?
Yeah, I think we need to get an actual policy in front of the board that you can do something on paper. Obviously, we've got a report here. Gives us a lot of good information, but we need an actual policy, or the board needs actual policy in hand to look at. So.
Right.
Yeah, there, there's some legwork to be done to get that before you, like, obviously, if we're having a public.
You got two weeks.
Okay. Yeah.
Honestly, with the tariff stuff, uh, we've been working on some graphs and trying to do some things. The more rocks we turn over, the more what ifs we have.
Sure.
I would, I would ask if the board would maybe hold that off until May and give us a little more time on the tariff, because again, rush a tariff in with unforeseen and we can really have a problem. Um, again, the items we're talking about, I think is the same thing you were mentioning. They are not, um, impacting a customer in the rates. These are just more, uh, options for customers to look at. Again, if you talk about that, that, uh, not net leadering, but where, where we have solar above leadering, where they're not actually seeing, you know, you can expand that to reference value. Trying to do all those things, if, if maybe May could be something we do, I think we could provide a much better comprehensive.
Steve, did you?
No, I was just gonna ask, the, you the AMI data versus the statistical analysis.
Another way I'll do this for larger committees like this, I would look at, I would pull LGD's last rate case that's filed with the commission. Look at the load chase for residential and use that as a benchmark period. And then if your larger customers probably have AMI data already and we can make more targets, there's, there's ways around that. It's just a matter of how, how much you estimate versus how much you can do.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I guess.
So.
You can definitely do a great first cut it, but without it, and then it gets, then you're refining it from there.
Jason, does that seem like a later approach? Go for the May.
Um, yeah. And anything else on that list for immediate, was it just the green tariff, just refresh my memory? Where we would need to make a, a decision about the, um, environmental benefit?
Um, that would be more so on the, the value of solar rate. Um, yeah, so that, it's kind of.
So can we discuss that, like?
I think we need to, at least we need to, you're talking about the environment and the social. I mean, I think, uh, you had mentioned that Austin and Minnesota both have done some work on that. I think we're, if you can get those as fast as you can.
Sure.
Make sure you hit on vacation, Travis.
Yep. Before that.
Okay.
Okay.
When are you leaving on vacation?
Uh, the week of April, I think it's the fourth, school break week for school.
But not everything you reviewed was needed publicly, right? Like the, the green E rec program, yeah. Okay, would you mind kind of going through and just figuring out what we need public and non, because I mean, like the rec program, if we implement that, that's straightforward.
Yeah, it, it is. I, I would like to propose a tariff document on that as well, which means, um, you know, of course, it's, it's the board's tariff, so it's your, your decision, not mine, but, uh, I would propose we have a tariff. That way myself, other staff members have a good strict board policy, though we know the boundaries we're working within on that. Um, KU has a filed green tariff.
I was gonna say, there's some things you need to think about is again, those, those tariff, excuse me, those green recs are more market base, so they're gonna be changing prices. How do we do that? Do we affect that price? You know, annually, do we do some look at, uh, you know, all those kind of things that you need to, that you need. Devil's in the details of that tariff and that's.
That's a good point.
Same, it's a little more complicated sometimes. Just so you'll have a certain level, you know, who's, do you have a different commercials? It's just like KU does, there's all kinds of pieces to it that I think we need to sit down and look at pretty good.
Hmm, that's a good point. Okay.
So it gets more, more complicated.
Right, yeah.
That's what we found out. As soon as you turn on the one, you're like, now wait a minute, what it is, and then you're trying to break it, you know, at the same time.
And when you all come back, as much as you can, any analysis or information you could bring us in terms of what other utilities are doing. To kind of give us a backdrop to know what's, what's already been done, how's it working, impact, things like that.
Yep, be happy to do that. Um, I think EV charging is another one that's kind of in that area. We could, we could go ahead and try and pursue a tariff if we'd like. There's some nuance to it though. Um, I look at the, the charging stations we have, they, the techni, the technology is there to do time of use if we wanna do that. We didn't explore that in great detail yet, but maybe that's something we could.
Well, I think that's one. And sooner rather than later, coming up on the next budget cycle, because we had a very, very, very preliminary general discussion with the mayor, uh, the city manager in terms of, are they interested in applying for some of these federal funds? Uh, rates, do they wanna continue paying?
Right.
For the rates, do they want to own the new charging set? I mean, kind of all those things which, you know, we don't have any resolution. I mean, those issues are on the table and need to be part of that discussion also. I mean, they wants to apply for thirty of them and they wanna pay for it, start charging for the rates, where do they wanna pay, where do they want them, those types of things.
Sure, yeah. So we, we'll put that in the, the short term bucket to, you know, get something in place.
Take this, this report and, and next be, have another discussion. On these things and where, and where we go with them. It comes back out here, how we go forward with it, because this is a lot of taking in one place and one thing and what to do, so. There's like information item the next time or exit item or whatever is relevant.
Sure. Ms. Poe, can you redo that? You okay?
Hey Craig, you'll come back.
Travis, was there anything that you wanted to add or?
I don't think so, unless there's any questions for me. Uh, I think that was.
No, you all did a great job. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Kathy, does anybody sign up for public comment on this?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Okay, for next item is, uh, item. And for, uh, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KR sixty one point eight one oh one C. Discuss pending of proposed litigation regarding an ocean matter.
Uh, some of it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
No, second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those voters say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're going into closed session.
We're coming out of closed session. We have a motion, come out of closed session. We have a second. Uh, we're, all those voters say aye.
Aye.
Both, we're out of closed session. No action, uh, was taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn, we're adjourned.